I'd like to call to order the City of Littleton City Council Regular Meeting for Tuesday, August 17, 2021. It is 6:30 PM or 18:30. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Malin.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
Councilmember Rednicki.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, you've had a chance to review the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, it is approved. We'll move right down into our comments and reports. We'll start with the City Manager.
No report, Mayor.
Great, thank you. City Attorney.
Briefly, Mayor. Tri-County Health, who governs the public health for Arapahoe, Adams, and Douglas, met this afternoon to discuss the possible mandating of masks for school-aged children. On the vote of requiring all students to wear masks, the vote was split four-four with one abstain- one person abstaining, so that failed. The vote to require masks for people in those counties, those school districts, for ages two through 11, passed, six to two. The effective date of that will be next Monday, the 23rd, and it does allow for the counties to opt out. I expect Douglas County will absolutely opt out. I'm not so sure that Arapahoe County will, so I imagine they may stay in there. So that could affect a lot of our younger schoolgoers in LPS. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for the update. We'll start with council members, and we'll go to Councilmember Rednicki. Your microphone, please.
Got it. Let's see, the Art and Culture Commission met last week. Topics were Kelly Nard brought up the lodging tax. I didn't, she did. And they talked about needing a couple of new members. Apparently, they're down one business member and down the library member, and they asked me to talk to council about the possibility of assigning new members to that commission. So I have done so. Jenny Hankinson had a presentation about a GIS map that spots where the art and culture hotspots are in Littleton. It's quite an interesting map. It's similar to the projectivity map that you see if you go to Littleton's site. It covers architecture, culture, and art spots around the city. Let's see. They also, she provided a very interesting graph about where Littleton is strong or weak in the arts and culture. It was a vertical graph. It's still in progress right now, but it shows, like I say, where we're strong is the City of Littleton and where we're weak for various arts and culture. Let's see. That's about it.
Great, thank you very much. Councilmember Driscoll.
Yes, thank you. A week or two ago, myself and Nancy Buck with the city attended a welcome reception for Dr. Stephanie Fuji, the new president ACC, so we're excited to have her on board and work more closely with ACC to cooperate with potential parking, working on their facilities, those types of things. Also wanted to thank the Elks this past weekend, a great weekend for the city and the Elks. On Saturday, they had the Kids Fishing Derby. Over 100 kids participated with approximately 200 adults around there helping out the kids. So it was really a huge turnout at this little pond right behind us. And then also the car show on Sunday was a great turnout, too. Reminder, Western Welcome Week, we're having the Taste of Western Welcome Week tomorrow night, right outside here. So come on by. I think it's 25 bucks a ticket in advance, so I hope to see everybody there.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Fay.
On Friday night, I attended the Little Jam, and also, it was at the same time the Western Welcome Week kickoff, and they announced by name each of the council members, and so I accepted the recognition for everyone.
Well, thank you.
That's all.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Grove.
First thing is, I attended the Next Generation.
Your microphone, please.
I attended the Next Generation Advisory Committee meeting on August 6, and for those of you on council, they did a very extensive comments on the sustainability portion of ULUC and the general ULUC. So I think that's going to be coming to council? That should be yes. So that will be coming to council through the City Manager's office, and you can see what they came up with, some very interesting ideas. It's already gone to Kathleen and her group. They want to get involved in Western Welcome, and they're in the process of getting some T-shirts and some literature that they can pass out. And they are working on a project that was given to them by council on how to make Littleton fun, and they kind of want to broaden that to what makes Littleton attractive to their age group. So you'll be seeing them working on that. They're going to really beat that up at their next meeting. I also attended, two weeks ago, I think it was August 10, Thursday night, South Suburban had an open meeting for Ridgeview Park. It was fabulous. What's going on over there, I think you've maybe heard, some of you on and off, is that the High Line Canal used to fill the pond, just kind of some overflow. Well, they're no longer running water through the High Line Canal as often, so now the pond has gone down, the fish had to be moved out, and it's not as attractive as it once was. And some of the community wanted to get together and have a community meeting and have Littleton, South Suburban hear what they wanted to think about in terms of the future of this park. The turnout was fabulous. South Suburban had storyboards explaining the situation. They had their senior management there, and Easy Up. The neighbors mingled. They had ice cream and a jumpy castle, and I was able to go along, go around and talk to the different members of the community and hear their ideas. What's going to happen is, is going to have a survey. South Suburban will compile the results, come up with some options, then they will go back to the community, select an option based on feasibility, and then put that in the budget and eventually put it out to bid and implement. There were other council members there, so I think we had a great showing. And that's it.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Milliman.
Hi, everybody. Let's see, a couple things. South Metro Housing Options had their meeting last Thursday. They're going to have a booth at the Western Welcome Week this coming Saturday, so please go and say hello, talk to those folks about housing in Littleton. And they're also in the middle of their budgeting for next fiscal year. The other thing is, on a personal note, I want to send out a note of gratitude to CVSG, which is the Emergency ER Vet in Littleton. Fantastic staff. I cannot extend my gratitude enough to those folks. And then last but not least, please, please, get out. Walk the High Line Canal. Get on the South Platte Trail. It's beautiful right now. It's cool in the mornings. It's warm in the afternoons. Take advantage of those resources that we have in town. That's it.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem.
No report today, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I have a few things here. Let's see, first of all, I was able to attend a ribbon-cutting, and we haven't done ribbon-cuttings in a long time for some of the new businesses in Littleton, so it's really great that we've activated that program again. It was, and Councilmember Rednicki was there as well. It was for, was it plumbing, rock plumbing, heating, and air conditioning. They had located over at South Park is where they are. So welcomed them. Let's see, Mayor Protem and City Manager and I met with members from the Japanese consulate, what was that, a couple weeks ago at least now. So that was, it was nice to meet with them and share some information with them. Let's see. Oh, also, the, Councilmember Driscoll mentioned the Elks Club and the Fishing Derby. I, too, want to express my appreciation to the Elks Club Lodge for running and sponsoring the entire event. As you said, how many kids did you say? Over 100 kids, over 100 kids, including my grandson, which was awesome. You can't believe the excitement that that brings for kids, let alone parents, let alone at least one grandparent that was there. It's a pretty cool thing. Special thanks to the Elks Club. I also, we had our last meeting greet last week, and I want to do a special thanks to our staff for going the extra mile. I also want to give kudos to Kathy Weaver, because I know with that bouncy house that we have there, the kids keep lining up. They don't care if it's 6 o'clock and the event's over or not. They want to bounce on that doggone house. So kudos to Kathy Weaver for staying extra hours or two to make sure the kids got an opportunity to do that. Also to all the staff that helped set up and take down. So thank you, City Manager, if you could please pass that on. Let's see, also, the Transportation Mobility Board meeting is this Thursday, 6:30. And City Manager, did they move it over to Public Works Facility?
I have not been able to confirm that. I know, yes, from our Public Works Director.
Okay. So that meeting, instead of being at this location, I know there are some that do attend that, so it will be over at the Public Works Facility, and that's 6:30 Thursday. Council, also a reminder, this coming Monday, 6 PM, we have a meeting with South Suburban, and it will be at their facility. And I don't have the address in front of me, but your emails have that information. See, also, next week, we do have a special meeting on Thursday, the 26th, at 6:30. And also, congratulations to, again, to our staff, our financial staff, for the comprehensive annual financial report, for, again, a very positive response. And we will be getting the results of that presented to us on September 7. And I think with that, Mayor Protem, did you have something you wanted to add?
I was just going to comment also on the audit and really give kudos to our financial department, and in particular Tiffany Hooton, our finance director. One of our standalone council goals is good governance, and a lot of what contributes to good governance happens outside the public eye. This audit process is a big deal for our city and for our finance department. It's a lot of work, and once again, they've passed with flying colors. And so my congratulations to them. Really a big deal and a job well done.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Scott. My last item that I do have is my appreciation to our men and women who go out every night and every day. Our police, they do a fine job, a fantastic job, and I knew, I know that there's some folks out there that would like to find, to criticize those folks. And I tell you what, we have some of the finest police officers that anybody could have. So again, if you could pass that on to those for me.
I'd like to add on Dispatch.
If we could go back to Councilmember Milliman, go ahead and turn your mic on and tell us.
And add on Dispatch to that list of kudos.
That, I think they're a part of the Police Department now. Yeah, I think they are. So, cool. All right, thank you very much. All right, with that, we will move on to citizens' appearance, of which we have none, so we'll go right down to item number five. We have public comments. Councilmember Grove, if you could please tell us how we will proceed.
Public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The City Council is not authorized, under the Colorado Open Meetings Law, to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by the public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to the City Manager and/or the City Attorney for immediate comment after the public comment, or to staff to obtain additional information and report back to council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Please remember to state your name and your address or your council district for the record. Please speak clearly and directly into the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The time now is 6:45, and I will open the public comments. We will start with Stephen, I believe it's Essex, Essex, you're up, and then, thank you very much, and then it'll be Matthew Duff, and then followed by Sean Clark. Sorry about your name there. Thank you.
It's all right.
Right into the microphone.
I only tried to be a con- two years ago.
Your writing has nothing to do with my reading it.
Okay. I've been living at 792 West Euclid for the last 34 years. We've had no problem with parking along the side of my property from Euclid to Sterns Parkway, okay, and the school is right across the street from there, Euclid Middle School. We need more parking for these people that drop off their kids or pick up their kids during the morning and afternoon sessions. It takes about an hour for each side part of the day. We don't have that parking anymore. We're not ticketing those people that park along there. If you put a no parking sign, means no parking, but five cars were there today. I'm having a problem with the parking control persons as well. I parked my other car across the street by the park. I'm getting notices and complaints that my car's been in the same spot. Well, I move it every other day or every day. I am tired of getting complaints. I need my parking back on that side of Euclid, from Alati, on Alati, from Euclid to Sterns Parkway. You can't take away six to 10 parking spaces on that street, but the bike lane that's there, back where the safety zone is. I went to the manager, I went to Public Works, I'm not getting no result. I'm tired of it. You need that to reduce the congestion at the school between 9:00 in the morning and then until 4:00 in the afternoon, or 15 or so. I'm having problems with that. We just can't have that. Parking, the bike lane has always been on the left side of the driver's side door. It's not along the curb side. You're taking away people's parking and drop off. It's not appropriate anymore. The safety zone that's there could be used for the bike lane, in my opinion. I was never asked about this before it was adopted and put a newer parking bike lane in. Bike lane has always been on the left side of the driver's side door. I'm parking along the street. I never had a problem with my cars parked on that side of the street, on the east side. Now I'm having a problem on the west side, because someone's complaining that my car's been in the same spot every day. I could see it at the backside when I would get out to get out my front door. I appreciate your concern, and we can get something settled about this, because I am tired of getting notices from the parking guy.
Great, thank you, Stu. Next up, we have Matthew Duff, then Sean Clark, and then Pam Chadborn.
Hello, my name is Matthew Duff. I'm building a house over in East Heritage Neighborhood by Runyon Elementary School. It's going to be finished soon, which we're really excited about. That's 463 West Easter Ave. And I saw how fast those three minutes went when he spoke, so I'm going to try to reduce my list a little bit. But I wanted to talk about a couple things predominantly, the funding fix and then the zoning as it relates to that. And one of the main things I want to discuss is, you know, I drive around Littleton on my bike a lot, and I see empty parking lots everywhere, you know, and this is, this is some of the main, you know, the main space that we have in a city that's largely built out now at this point. There's so much of it taken up by parking, you know, and it just sits empty, you know, and, you know, if we looked at an aerial view of Littleton, I believe that if we looked at like the Main Street area, that would be some of our highest-performing area in our city in terms of tax dollars, in terms of all of these things. And, you know, that wouldn't be permissible anymore to build an area like Main Street, even though we all love to go down there, you know, on the weekends and spend time there. You know, our current zoning laws make, you know, more dense areas like this not possible to build. And when I think of the space going down Littleton Boulevard, you know, and down Broadway, it's really, if you look at an aerial map, many of the places are 20% business and 80% parking, you know, as a ratio. And we have a great opportunity to help, I believe, fix the funding problems by, you know, making these areas more dense with additional opportunity for businesses and, you know, expanding the style of development that we have in Main Street all the way down Littleton Boulevard and in other areas. And, you know, I saw the zoning of this area on Littleton Boulevard saying that it's meant to be like neighborhood stores. And as we make it predominantly parking, we make it so you have to drive to all of these places, because each parking space stretches out the block more and more. And so I would love to see a plan, you know, coming forward where we encourage, you know, more density, more businesses to come into our area, make it so, you know, I can safely ride, you know, with my kids to these businesses where we like to spend our money. And, you know, like, we need more people on bicycles, and making a more dense area would help that, you know, and for instance, for Euclid, we probably have 90 of these kids getting dropped off by car, even though they live in the neighborhood, because it is simply not safe to ride your bicycle as a kid in our neighborhoods because of how we've set up our lanes and everything. So thank you for your time.
Great, thanks, Sean. And stick around after this meeting. We do have a study session on our code updates that we're doing. I'm expecting everybody that's here now to stay for another two hours after this meeting is over. So, next up, we have Sean Clark and then Pam Chadborn.
Good evening, Council. I don't have a long three minutes. I just have a few follow-up questions, because I don't really have a lot of time to show up every single meeting that you have, so I appreciate you having these public hearings. Welcome, Mr. Hoffman, to the neighborhood. You mentioned the Transportation Mobility Board. I don't even know what that is. If somebody could explain that, that'd be great. What's their purpose? What do they do? What decisions are they making? Because I'd love to understand, because we talk about the funding fix and we're talking about transportation. So curious about that. Curious about if Littleton is going to investigate getting funds from the CDOT anytime in the future, or ask for funds, or do an exercise of submitting a request for funds, so that we could think about how the taxpayers in our city don't have to fund the whole mineral overpass idea, being that it's a US 85, it is not a Littleton Road. Curious, I am an auditor by trade for a number of years. Great to hear the results. I find it surprising if there weren't any findings. Would be curious if there's anything that could be shared that we should be worried about, that isn't significant material, as they would call it. The funding ordinance that's on the ballot today, I'm curious if that's the only funding request that's going to happen for taxes. If there's anything in the future, if we could post that, other people can look at it. I know there's a lot of ideas, a lot of debate. Just curious about what might be there. And has there been any further research on trying to pull taxes from online retailers like Amazon? I think when I asked this before, I was, the response was, it's complicated. We've looked into it, but there was no real answer. Thank you. You have a minute back.
Great, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Pam Chadborn. And if there's anybody else that would like to speak after Pam Chadborn, there'll be time for you as well.
Good evening, Council. My name is Pam Chadborn. I live a block and a half from here in Council District 1. I would like overhead projectors so I can bring paper stuff and display it. It's cheap and easy, and it should just be done for the sake of the public's being able to present stuff to you. But as someone else did, Kurt Samuelson, former PC member, I'll hold things up. I received both of these in the mail, I think most people in Littleton did, about the funding fix. Both of these cost money, but... But you tonight are considering a measure to not notify citizens of the land use code change. And the fundamental betrayal of the public trust is what I would like you to consider in what you're doing. You're advocating for a tax increase that you think you need but has only been partially talked about or justified. Very little data has been presented about the integrated budget over the next 10 years so that we can see the real. I disagree. The big picture hasn't been presented. But you're not sending anything to the citizens of Littleton about the land use code, and you should. That, this is, the land use code is a taking, in my opinion, from many members of the public who have no clue of what could be built next door to them after, if this is approved and enacted. And that is wrong. People have a right, I've said this before, code is not for developers and builders or people who buy stuff. It is for people who live here, and so we know what happens next door to us. That's the fallacy with short-term rentals as well. We like some stability, some idea, some prediction of what's going to happen to us, and we want to know what our property values are. And you should send cards to everyone in Littleton at least to inform them of what the land use code is doing. And second, I'll just say, so what the land use code is doing is not well-defined anywhere. I defy any of you to give me the 20-year plan of if the land use code is enacted, what is kind of the likely progression? You know, maybe 50% more, 50% less in property taxes? What areas are going to be developed? What's going to be developed there? You know, if we had 300 housing units added for 25 years, we would meet the 6,550 goal. You guys have no idea, and neither is staff, to us about what's going to be built, where, how much, what density, what intensity, and what it's going to do to property taxes. Look at downtown. It has a huge impact. You folks should demand more description of the impact of these changes before you consider more. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to speak that has not signed up? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:57. City manager or city attorney, anything you would like to add or comment?
Yes, please, mayor, council. Yeah, just a couple of comments here. Reed Betsing, our city attorney, may have a few comments as well here. But for Mr. Esses, I'm not familiar with receiving anything here, but I'd be more than happy to work with staff and report back out to Mr. Esses on the parking issue and certainly to council to try to alleviate his concern. I think Mr. Duff makes, quite honestly, a rather astute observation about parking lots. Obviously, we're having a very detailed conversation in our community right now with our U-Luck process, our land use code, in trying to decide whether or not mixed use is appropriate in some corridors in order to take better opportunities of some of these, you know, shopping centers. And we've had, you know, multiple conversations over years about corridors like Broadway and aging shopping centers and maybe looking at opportunities for kind of redevelopment. And so I think Mr. Duff might be pretty pleased to know that we're trying to take that issue on. I also think his comment about walkability and kind of a connection that we've got from schools to parks to a lot of our kind of perhaps mixed-use areas, our corridors, is a high priority. In fact, we'll probably talk more about that when we talk about the potential for a ballot issue around our capital funding here a little later this evening and certainly here in a little, almost two weeks when we have a, potentially, a public hearing around a very specific proposal on a ballot. We don't have the funding to kind of fill in the gaps, to take on these issues here on, from a capital perspective, and we recognize that we have a lot of work to be done when we talk about making things connect or walkability. Mr. Clark made a series of comments here that I'd be more than happy after the meeting or at some point kind of sit down and share lots of things with Mr. Clark. I think he raises some, some good things here. The TMB, our Transportation Mobility Board, is a new board, certainly can talk about how we've brought them up to speed and kind of how they integrate with the Public Works Department and kind of looking at a series of projects and basically helping us try to vet at the staff level a series of alternatives here for us to pursue when it comes to construction. The most notable, quite honestly, is the conversations that we've been having with the TMB and council about trying to engage in federal funding, CDOT. And so, again, Mr. Clark makes a, a great point, is that we are trying to get into this arena here to participate with them so that we can bring federal funding. And typically, it's at 80/20. 20% is the local match. And of course, we want the federal funding to pay the majority of the cost on Santa Fe. But again, we need to have a fix to the capital issue within our own resources in order for us to even come up with a 20% match. Our audit, there were no significant findings. Quite honestly, I think this is one of the cleaner audits that this city has had, so congratulations to Tiffany Hooton, our finance director, and certainly her staff. I know they're very proud of the work that we've done, especially in the COVID area when it was extremely difficult dealing with federal funds and the like here for us to kind of manage a lot of that issue. Ms. Chadborn kind of talks about several things here and the, I'm not quite sure if I understand exactly her point about the land use change. Certainly, there's a public hearing that will always be about any ordinance that changes, you know, land use decisions here. We have a legislative process, perhaps that's what she's thinking about here, that we are looking to have a discussion with council and perhaps the city attorney can kind of comment on that. The one piece I will comment on is how the city has kind of raised the bar about the financial models that we do have created here for this city, which are unique to any city in this state. And so I think we should be very proud of the effort that we've gone to trying to understand the long-range impact of the land use decisions that we will make, not just we as the code itself, but individual projects as they kind of progress through time within the city. If you remember, council, part of that presentation here not too long ago was to share that, you know, the financial decisions that we make on the land use code do have an impact, perhaps not to the fullest extent that we might hope, but the mixed-use corridor discussion certainly is one of the key decisions in the land use per the financial model. So, those are some quick comments, and I'm going to turn to my colleague here, see if he has anything he might want to add.
You know, I would just add a couple of comments related to Mr. Clark's points. So, this past fall, the city did adopt kind of a model ordinance and join what's called the sales and use tax system that the state of Colorado has finally put together. It took a number of years to put together a system that worked, given the fact that different municipalities have different taxing rates. So, I don't know if we've had enough time to gain an understanding as to how much higher our sales tax has been from online remittals, but in the past, the challenges that not only Littleton had but other cities is, you know, we would ask people to remit taxes, and a lot of them did. Amazon has actually been probably one of the better companies on being, you know, kind of at the forefront of remittance of taxes. We do have the ability to audit, which we do every once in a while. I will tell you that oftentimes audits are more expensive than the money that we actually get. And so it's a little challenging because sometimes we'll actually have to go out for outside help on audits just due to staffing levels within our finance department and existing workloads. So, we are doing the best we can as it relates to pursuing online sales tax, and I do believe that in the future, we will continue to see gains in that area as it becomes more common. As it relates to the CAFR and the audit, you know, that is a public record. You're free to pour through all the excitement. And I will tell you, we will be having a presentation on September 7th, but in the interim, I'm sure you can contact finance and they can get you a copy of, of all that engrossing information. You know, to Ms. Chadborn's comments about the mailings, I believe the mailings probably cost about $20,000 for both of those mailings to go out to every city of Littleton residents, so not exactly cheap. But the intent of that is so that our council and our citizens, our council has the information, our citizens have the information and the ability to share that information with our decision-makers, and that's city council, as it relates to some of the funding concerns. And so that our council has the most information they can from their citizens in order to make that determination, if they make that determination at all. So, that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We will move on to our consent agenda items. Consent? I did close. Yeah, thank you. I could have used it some of the times when I didn't close it, but this time I did close it. Okay. So, we are down to our consent agenda items. Consent agenda items may be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote by, on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be removed by, at the request of a council member. Mayor Protam.
Thanks, mayor. And I earned my keep tonight. Here we go. Consent agenda item A, Resolution 39-2021. Resolution 39-2019, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Arapahoe County Clerk and Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the conduct and administration of the November 2nd, 2021 coordinated election. Resolution 38-2021, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Douglas County Clerk and Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the conduct and administration of the November 2nd, 2021 coordinated mail ballot election. Resolution 37-2021, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder and the City of Littleton regarding the conduct and administration of the November 2nd, 2021 coordinated mail ballot election. Ordinance 16-2021, an ordinance on first reading, amending the Littleton City Code, Title 10, Chapter 12, Amendment Procedure Regarding City Initiated Comprehensive Rezoning Process. Resolution 36-2021, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Arapahoe County Board of Commissioners regarding a 2021 grant of Arapahoe County Open Space Program funds for a trail connectivity analysis plan. Resolution 35-2021, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Arapahoe County Board of Commissioners regarding a 2021 grant of Arapahoe County Open Space Program funds for development of a city water resources master plan. ID number 21-174, motion to approve amendments to city councils' legislative rules. Resolution 34-2021, authorizing an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Littleton and the Colorado Department of Transportation for the South Platte Canyon Road slash South Lowell Boulevard, State Highway 75, and Bowles Avenue, and South Platte Canyon Road, State Highway 75, and West Mineral Avenue intersection improvements. ID number 21-180, motion to approve the August 3rd, 2021 regular meeting minutes. And mayor, while I'm at it, I'll move to approve consent agenda items A through I.
Second.
We need a motion. We need a motion first?
Oh, I did.
Oh, was that, did you get, did you also get, I didn't hear it in there. I was just, you had entranced with whatever you did there. Thank you very much for doing that. Better you than me tonight. We have a motion, the second by council member Grove. Counsel, if you're ready to vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you, council. We will now move on to general business. Now, we haven't had general business a long time, so, council, I just want to remind everybody that this, this does not have a public's comments section tonight, so that's part of what's going on here. So, I'm going to read, I'm going to read both ordinances. We are, we're going to have one presentation, is my understanding, so we're going to have one presentation. I'll go ahead and I'll read both ordinances, but when it comes time to vote, it'll be on separate, separately. We'll vote on them. So, our first item is ordinance 20-2021, an ordinance on first reading, submitting to the registered voters of the City of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot question regarding a half cent sales tax and use tax increase to fund the cost of capital improvement projects. So, council, the question that's going to go before us tonight that we're going to respond to will be, do we want to place this, this item on the ballot? Okay. So, our second item, again, we're going to vote for these separately, it's ordinance number 21-2021, an ordinance on first reading submitting to the registered voters of the City of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot question regarding a three-quarter cent tax, sales tax, and use tax increase to fund the capital improvement projects. Again, council, the question is, do we want to move this forward and have it placed onto the ballot? And again, we won't have any public comment, but we will be voting on whether or not we move each of these issues forward or not. So, after our discussion, we'll, we'll be making that, that decision. With that, city manager.
All right. Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. With me is Kelly Nardi. She's our Communications and Cultural Services Director. Between her and I, we have a short presentation here about these two ordinances. Normally, an ordinance of this magnitude, you know, we, for first reading, could simply be on consent, and really, the intent generally is just to set a public hearing. And of course, that's more of a detailed conversation. So, this evening here, we have two ordinances that we're actually going to be recommending to the city council that we advance here simultaneously. We'll talk a little bit more about that here in a minute. You know, I just want to make some general comments here about the process and where we've been. You know, this is an issue that we all know, that we've been talking about here ever since my tenure and probably longer than that, and I've been here six years. We've had a pretty deep struggle trying to find some solutions here to our capital project funding problem here. We've looked at all sorts of different ideas. In fact, one of our commenters here during public comment asked about the other kinds of taxes that we looked at, and we looked at a lot. And I know the council's aware of this. There are some that I know that we quickly discarded, property tax being one of them. We knew that that is, in, in the aggregate of what people pay on their property, that that is probably one of the poorer choices that we could make when it comes to the kinds of capital improvements that are necessary, not only for our citizens, but for all those who actually visit our location. And typically, sales tax is kind of one of those that tends to be one of the stronger elements to try to be fair about a tax. Of course, we looked at lodging tax and marijuana, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. I think, too, that coming out of COVID, clearly you heard from me as your city manager that I had a lot of concern about our timing. We all know that one of the biggest challenges that we had here, directed by council here in February, was to go back to staff and ask us to communicate with our community. And we have gone through a process in the last several months. We have done everything that we can to try to help people understand the magnitude of the issue. What is the problem? Not so much about trying to find the solution right up front, but let's make sure that we understand kind of what is at risk here. And I've said this multiple times publicly, I am concerned that the quality of life that we learned, that we have enjoyed in our community will slowly erode if we do not solve this problem. It is real. And so with that, we have a short presentation here and looking to advance uniquely two ordinances here around a potential ballot issue. So, Kelly, if you don't mind, just advancing to the next slide.
Sure.
And I'll let you take the summary here.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. Good evening, council, and good evening, citizens. I'm here to give you a little bit of a summary of our research and engagement project. You can see on this screen some of the major milestones. February, council reaffirmed the goal of financial stability and asked staff to pursue a revenue-based ballot question. The consultant team was introduced in March, the budget proviso in April. The first polling took place in May and June, and the qualitative research. We had a telephone town hall in June, and last week, you had a status report on the second poll. Oh, thank you. And council provided consensus to staff to bring forward the two questions you'll be considering tonight. I would remind you of some of the results of the polling. The first poll, April 27th to May 2nd, of 300 likely voters found about a 54% support for a half-cent sales tax increase and 57% support for a three-quarter cent sales tax increase. Since that poll took place, those numbers increased in a pretty good fashion for the poll that was done. For the poll that was done July 20 through the 24th, the half-cent sales tax increase had a 68% support, and the three-quarter percent sales tax increase had 66% of support. So what we found is that with all the education that we provided to residents, it raised the voter awareness of our capital projects fund problem, and it also raised support for a solution. We had a two-question survey on Open Littleton. The results that you have, this was uploaded Thursday to get in your packet, these numbers have increased substantially over the weekend. We had 414 visitors, 308 respondents. That equals about 15.4 hours of public comment. The marijuana tax was at 67.2%, the lodging tax at 70.8%, the half-cent sales tax at 54.7, and the three-quarter cent increase at 48.9, and 6.6% of people were not, excuse me, interested in any of these solutions. I wanted to just go over some more of the engagement and education that we've done over the spring and the summer. We leveraged our city-owned platforms, our website, The Littleton Report, Facebook, YouTube, and Open Littleton. As you saw earlier, we did two direct mail pieces. The goal of those was to encourage people to come to your study session, your council meeting and public hearing on the 26th, because we want to hear from citizens on what they think the best solution to our problem is. We had numerous personal interactions at the state of the city, at Meet, Greet, and Eat, at the telephone town hall, and at commission and committee presentations, and we targeted people on social media. We promoted posts and targeted ads on Facebook, in The Littleton Independent with print ads, and on at banners. We created a website, the Funding Fix website. On that site is a fact sheet, FAQs, links to the survey, and other documents, including the 15-year capital projects list. The print edition of The Littleton Report had two front-page stories. The online edition had seven stories. We shot a video with the city manager that was played on YouTube and Facebook. We had 120 attendees at the state of the city, about 40-plus attendees through presentations at the Planning Commission, the Transportation Mobility Board, the Historic Preservation Board, the Arts and Culture Commission, and the Next Gen Advisory Committee. We held a telephone town hall with 334 participants, and as mentioned earlier, the two direct mail pieces. I'm going to turn it over to Mark at this time to talk about the options before you tonight.
Well, I would hope the council would agree that we've done a lot here in the last several months, certainly since February, trying to do our best to communicate to our citizens, to our public, you know, the magnitude of the issue. What is the problem? As we touched on the survey data, we did, you know, a couple of alternatives kind of rose to the top that we wanted to, you know, ask our citizens about, retail marijuana, lodging tax, and a sales tax. There were other issues considered, mentioned property tax previously, but those three seemed to have some level of merit. I think during the study sessions with City Council over the last month or more, you know, we started to see that perhaps in the case of retail marijuana, we just don't have enough history with that, and certainly the magnitude of revenue that we could be expecting, you know, at $1 million at best, really is not materializing here in the short run. And so the magnitude of the issue is about $6.5 million that we really need to kind of fund over time. Lodging tax is one that the council really hadn't had much conversation here with the hotelers, the ones who specifically would be collecting the tax. And so we felt that in this particular case, while it may have some merit on the magnitude of roughly $1 million, it again, just doesn't solve the problem in the magnitude that we're looking at, plus the time that we really need to commit to talking to those who, who would directly be collecting this particular kind of tax. So here we are, looking at sales tax now. After all this months of engagement and all the months of conversation here, the last study session, the council asked for two different ordinances to consider here moving forward here. So a half-cent sales tax, that's 50 cents on $100. We would be looking at generating approximately $6.5 million annually over that period of each year. We would be using the, the list, the $90 million-plus list of unfunded capital projects, again, as Kelly pointed out, it's on our webpage, so if those who want to actually look at the very specific list of projects, can go there and kind of see the ones that we would be actually looking to improve upon. Within that list, too, we've also asked our Transportation Mobility Board to kind of weigh in and give recommendations to City Council on that. If the voters, if you advance this, and the voters were to approve some measure here, then obviously, over time, the Transportation Mobility Board will actually even have a deeper role, and I'm going to come back to that here towards the end. So I've listed here just bullet points, you know, the opportunities here that are, that are shown on that $90 million-plus list. Some improvements, the Mineral and Santa Fe intersection, we know that that's a priority here. We have been able to secure some federal grant funding for that, if I remember correctly, magnitude of roughly $30 million. You know, we don't have the funds currently for our 20% match, and so this funding proposal that we're asking the council to consider, and then ultimately the voters, if approved, would allow us the match, so we can advance the federal funding for that particular intersection. Without it, we do not have an answer. I think we all know here, conversations, and certainly during my tenure, street maintenance, reconstructions is always a priority, and I think that that has resonated in the polling here, that we know that our residents are asking for us to find a solution to that. We have, over time, been able to provide some additional funding for street maintenance. The magnitude of this problem, and our Public Works Director Keith Reacher has reported on this, we are in the bottom quartile for pavement condition in this community, across the state, our peers. So we know we have a deep hole to come out of, and so this funding fix would allow us to take on the reconstructions, the most expensive, and we have a whole list of those across our community. We know that if we do not take on the maintenance in the appropriate fashion, there'll come a time when typical maintenance, seal coats, chip seals, those kinds of things will be useless. We'll slip into the reconstruction, which goes from $100,000 a mile to $1 million a mile. And it's, it is that critical that we solve that problem, otherwise, we'll get to a condition we'll never be able to overcome. Lot of conversation here in the last year about downtown and what's, you know, parking, the improvements. Denver Water's coming down Main Street. They're going to be replacing a water main. They're going to tear up all the pavement, all the sidewalk, all the landscaping in order to accomplish this particular project. So the question is, what are we going to put back? So obviously, we'd like to take advantage of, you know, the disturbance of something of that magnitude, and we don't have the funding to go beyond simply patching it. And so that's part of the proposal. We all know that we've been deferring maintenance on our buildings. We own 30-some-odd buildings, everything from City Hall, the Bemis Public Library, the museum, our courthouse, and a whole host of other projects or buildings throughout our community, and we've been allocating $300,000 a year for the last several years. It's irresponsible. We have got to find a solution in, in order for us to invest in the systems. Many of these buildings have gone way beyond their useful life. The Public Works Facility, one example, and we've talked about this at length, 1947 is the age of the building when it was constructed. We haven't touched it. So we have reached a point where we must reinvest. And as I mentioned here, all those projects are listed on our Funding Fix webpage. So one of the questions that the council asked here at the last study session of staff is to come back and to report, and we'll have more conversation here during the public hearing. And so we've put together here just a few slides of what you could expect, what you would get from a three-quarter cent, that's 75 cents on $100. So I think one of the, the pieces here that I think is just, we're lucky in time, very fortunate, but obviously, Congress, US Congress is looking at a funding fix nationally, across the entire country for infrastructure. If we are able to secure a funding fix on our side to allow us the 20% match, we will be in one of the best positions we could ever be to take advantage of federal funding. We don't have that, we will be left behind. We'll have no alternative for us to kind of match against the federal funding. I think there's also an opportunity to go beyond simply just Main Street when we talk about downtown. So what you might be able to get out of a three-quarter cent is actually a much broader conversation, not just about streetscape on Main Street, but how we link north and south in a larger community of downtown, both in landscaping, but more importantly, with pedestrian improvements. Walkability in a downtown is absolutely essential here for the long-term health of that neighborhood. Quite honestly, you could say that about every neighborhood, but certainly in downtown, walkability plays an extremely important role, especially when you look at possible parking improvements. One of the last things here that I just listed here is, one of the things that I think we've certainly struggled with here is the maintenance and long-term viability of all the medians that we got in the public right of way. We have probably one of the largest areas of landscaping here of any city, probably per capita, in how we address our medians, and we have no answer to that. Once again, we have not invested, and so we don't have, you know, the more up-to-date landscaping systems, or even landscaping concepts, to advance that we can maintain things in some reasonable fashion. I know we've talked to council about this in multiple years, so this is once again an opportunity for us, through the three-quarter cent, perhaps take a much deeper role, in looking at a comprehensive rebuild of all the medians and landscaping in our community, long-term. All these things take time. The advantage of three-quarter cent is, quite honestly, we can do more quicker. And we've had polling over time that clearly a lot of our residents would be more interested in us dealing with these issues sooner rather than later. Touched on maybe some of this here, but there's also very interesting opportunities for us to underground overhead utilities. We have a public service company, well, public service company, that dates me, XL Energy. I think it hasn't been called public service company in 20 years, so, you know, we have an underground fund with them, and right now, I think it stands at roughly $4 million. I think that we would have the ability to match that and actually look at some of our major corridors to downtown, to convert the overhead utilities to underground. That is perhaps one of the most significant improvements that you can make in a community. I've been doing that my whole career, and I can tell you that residents, when they see that kind of work in the end, that is probably the most gratifying project that a city can ever do, is make that conversion. We clearly want to be able to kind of partner in parking, not just with downtown and the potential Downtown Development Authority that the property owners and residents may want to structure, but also RTD. Eventually, we'll come out of COVID, we'll have an opportunity to look to RTD. We want to be prepared. The parking lot at Mineral and Santa Fe is the highest use, this is prior to COVID, the highest utilization of any parking lot in their entire system, and some of it is gravel. So we would like to be able to partner with them and to advance a lot of the potential improvements there and certainly in downtown. Improving the High Line Canal crossings. I know that our Public Works Director and myself, we both get lots of requests, annually certainly, much more often than that, to look at ways to move the pedestrian traffic on the High Line Canal across some of our major corridors, Mineral, Broadway. And so it's, it's funding like this that'll have the, give us the opportunity to look at those kinds of improvements. And obviously, those are the kinds of assets that our community resonate with, is our open space and our connection to things just like this. What I described on the half-cent for our buildings like Geneva, well, Bemis House, our Town Hall Art Center, certainly this facility, library, museum, a lot of the half-cent really is trying to take on some of the more significant maintenance issues. We have expansion and replacement issues that go way beyond that. Town Hall Art Center is perhaps one example of that. We own that facility, and we have not touched that in decades, and it shows. And it has real serious access problems, ADA, things that just do not meet any kind of code, whether it's state or federal, local. And so we have not had the opportunity, the resources to kind of take on those particular issues. So certainly, the three-quarter cent could go beyond just simple HVAC replacement issues. Couple of details that I think have come out here in the last couple of months that I think are real important, and once again, I think are, need to be highlighted. The proposals as drafted as an ordinance would be directed, the revenues only, to the Capital Project Fund. It would not be directed to any other fund, not the General Fund, not the Sewer Utility, nothing else but the Capital Project Fund. We also believe that, and our residents have asked about this, is they want to make sure there's a high degree of transparency behind this. They want to know basically how their money's being spent. All fair. And so we have incorporated within the ordinance, an annual report requirement. We are looking for a citizen review committee on that annual report, and we're recommending the Transportation Mobility Board. Again, that's largely kind of their role. And then once that is all assembled, that would be reviewed by the City Council, and then we obviously would share all that discussion, all that conclusion annually with our public. The other piece that's real important is that we need to develop at least a five-year financial plan. We need to list all the anticipated revenues, all the anticipated expenditures, so that, so that our community can, can see, at least in a five-year plan, where we intend to go with that. Quite honestly, many of these federal projects will require us to go beyond five years, probably 10 years, but at least a five-year. That puts us in line with many of the other funds. At some point in time, if the council advances this, and if the public approves this, at some point in time, we're going to have to come back, perhaps a year later, and talk about the importance of bonding. That allows us to take the revenue stream projected over time and actually borrow against that, in order for us to take the funds and actually create improvements much sooner rather than later. We'll have that conversation later, not now, but in many cases, the advantage of bonding is that the cost of borrowing is less than the cost of construction inflation. When that is the case, then bonding and borrowing is definitely to the city's advantage. So finally, you see two separate ballots before you, or ordinances, excuse me, one for three-quarter cent, one for half-cent. So the staff recommendation, per the direction of City Council at the previous study session, is to advance both of these ordinances to a public hearing, receive public testimony on both, deliberate, and then staff recommends that you advance one to the November ballot. And so listed in the staff communications are the two motions that would advance these ordinances. And so with that, that is my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right, counsel. As I mentioned, we won't have public comment tonight because this is general business. Essentially, it's a first reading under general business. Is that correct, City Attorney?
That's correct. You know, I was just going to add to Mr. Ralph's presentation that, you know, groceries are not subject to tax in this, in both of these ordinances, so just to throw that out there for public consumption, no pun intended. Thank you.
Okay. Just food for thought. Okay. Again, counsel, what I'm recommending also is that as we vote on each, each of these separately, I recommend that we do, advance both of them to second reading, so that we can hear from the public on both issues. So if, any comments? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
Mayor, a move to approve an ordinance on first reading submitting to the registered electors of the City of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot question regarding a half-cent sales and use tax increase to fund the cost of capital improvement projects, and to set the second reading and public hearing at a special meeting on August 26, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion in a second from Mayor Protam. Counsel, ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. All right, so counsel, we'll move on to the next item.
Mayor, I move to approve an ordinance on first reading submitting to the registered electors of the City of Littleton, Colorado, a ballot question regarding a three-quarter cent sales and use tax increase to fund the cost of capital improvement projects, and set the second reading and public hearing at a special meeting on August 26, 2021.
We have a motion in a second by Councilmember Fay. Okay, if we're ready to vote.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you, counsel. So both of those did move for. So both of those did move forward. We will now move on to number nine on our agenda. So we have Resolution 27-2021 approving the service plan for Santa Fe Park Metropolitan District numbers one through four. So counsel, we will be considering the formation of the districts for four metro districts, and after hearing the presentation and discussion, council will be taking a vote to either approve or not approve. And with that, City Manager.
Actually, I think I'm just going to turn that immediately over to Elizabeth and let her kick off this presentation.
And if I can usurp the presentation real quick, let me make an announcement. So, you know, the purpose of Metro District, it's a special district organized within, you know, CRS of the state's codes, and basically it serves as kind of a financing mechanism and allows for improvements to be done and mills to be collected on certain properties. In order to do that, they need approval from the local jurisdiction in which they want to exist, so that, hence, that's the service plan. The service plan basically is kind of the bylaws, if you will, of what the metro district is allowed to do and what it's not. So prior to last year, and it was almost a year ago today, this council adopted a metro district policy to guide not only council in their decision-making on whether to approve, but also to applicants in terms of what it is that we wanted them to submit, what it is that we wanted them to address, and what it is that we wanted staff to be able to evaluate before it came to council. So before that, we really just followed state statute. It's pretty bare bones, wasn't a lot of kind of real discretion or thought that council would have on these, and not a lot of guidance for, you know, someone trying to form a metro district. So hence the policy. And I will give you kind of an update as to what was discovered recently. So when this matter came before City Council on August 18, 2020, almost a year ago today, you know, we put this presentation in front of City Council, and some of the highlights that were given to council that are part of this metro district policy were, one, we wanted a cap on the mills. Obviously, a lot of council members, there was a lot of stories in the newspaper of, you know, some poor homeowners being saddled with, you know, just ridiculous amounts of mills and not being able to, you know, kind of fill out development. So those were kind of the bad cases. I would say probably by and large, metro districts get a bad rap, but they are a financing tool used by developers. But from what I heard from council, we wanted a cap. We wanted to make sure that our citizens weren't being completely overburdened by property taxes. So while the city only gets two mills, there's a lot of other jurisdictions that are taxing that are getting money, you know. I think Littleton Public Schools gets 67 mills. South Suburban's getting about 10, you know, South Metro Fire is getting 13. Any number of other taxing entities get most of those property taxes. None of that goes to the city, but it obviously affects our citizens. So one of the measures in the policy was to cap our mills at 40. We did allow for that to go over 40 in the case of what we'll call kind of regional improvements. Those improvements, to go fund those improvements that are going to benefit more than simply just that development, you know, more towards the public, the general public, not specifically for that development. So we do allow it to go over 40 mills. One of the other things, and this is the reason why I'm talking now, is when it was presented to council, we spoke about limiting the duration of debt service. One of the other concerns that I had heard from council was, you know, people refinancing debt, and suddenly this debt was never going away. And so to address that, what was presented to council was a limit on debt service at 35 years. However, so the policy says 35 years. With the policy and resolution that we adopted, we also had a sample model service plan, and it acted as a guide for applicants, and we wanted them to follow that guide. In that actual guide, we define the maximum debt service term at 40 years. So there is an inconsistency with the policy that was adopted. I will tell you that I believe that 35 mills is what council was sold, so to speak, and what you voted on, not what was defined in the model service plan example. However, the applicant has relied upon what we provided them to fill out, fill out this model service plan guide, use that as the guide. And so I did speak with Megan Murphy, she's the attorney for the applicant, and we discussed this briefly. She's going to speak to you about wanting the 40 mills and explain to you why, and I think it's important to listen to her. I will tell you 40 mill, or, excuse me, the 40-year term. Pardon me, I misspoke. And, you know, it's relatively standard across most metro districts, probably for bonding measures, 40 years is probably what they bond at, not 35. But we'll get to that point when we get to that point, but I wanted to raise that measure right now so that council members weren't taking a look and wondering how this is fitting or not fitting, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for that. Good evening, councilors. My name is Elizabeth K. Marquetti, and I'm a senior planner on behalf of the City of Littleton. Also here is Attorney Megan Murphy, the project representative on behalf of the applicant, and she will also be presenting to you tonight. Joining me at this table tonight is Ms. Peggy Douswell, consultant for the city specifically for the purpose of reviewing proposed metropolitan district service plans. She was instrumental in the review and analysis and recommendation of the proposed service plan. So again, thank you for this opportunity.
Elizabeth, I have a question already.
Yes, sir.
Maybe others do too. So the consultant there was to review all the numbers and things, as we went through, was it 400 and some odd pages, you know, so for the folks out there that want to do a lot of reading on weekends, become a council member. So a lot of it was numbers.
Correct.
And whether or not we understand exactly how it all relates, because there was page after page after page of numbers. So the purpose of our consultant then was to help us to be clear on those numbers that they were correct?
Absolutely. And you know what? I'll let Ms. Douswell kind of introduce herself a little bit and share a bit about her background and her work in the field, and some more of the particulars of her work for us. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. So Peggy Douswell, Pinnacle Consulting Group, we do manage special districts, and that includes the finance and accounting. We do assist with issuing bonds, also management compliance, facilities and capital operations. We have been in existence about 16 years, so we do manage districts across the state focusing on metropolitan districts. So this is something that we're very familiar with, and yes, I understand there are a lot of numbers there. So we do have the experience on not only forming districts, but also operating them and helping them assist with their bond issues. We take the role of the district, and that is very important to us. And so that was what we helped the city with, is kind of looking at this from the district standpoint, how it will operate after it's formed, what kind of financial implications does it have for a future homeowner. So we did look at the ratio, for example, of regional improvements to the total capital public improvements, and thought that was reasonable, and I'm getting ahead of you a little bit. But really, we looked at this because the city doesn't see a lot of these, and I know there's also maybe some non-performing projects or projects that have issues, and so that's why you came up with a policy. And we did look at that against your policy. So that was largely our role in this.
Is that helpful for where we are at this point in the presentation?
Thank you very much.
Super, okay. So, moving right along, I will briefly cover the process for the formation of a potential new metropolitan district. I will describe the existing conditions and context of the site that would be governed by the proposed metro district. I'll then provide the approval criteria and staff's analysis of the application's compliance or not with those criteria. I'll conclude with the city staff's recommendation and explain the possible council actions. So we are here tonight because the applicant, Santa Fe Park LLC, is requesting approval by the City Council of the resolution which would approve the proposed service plan for a new metropolitan district called Santa Fe Park Metropolitan Districts numbers one through four. The resolution before you tonight is number 27-2021. The process for forming a new metropolitan district starts with an application for approval of a proposed service plan. The application is reviewed by city staff against the City of Littleton policy for reviewing service plans for metropolitan districts dated August 18, 2020, and approved by Resolution Number 61-2020. The application is then sent to referral agencies and stakeholders, and the application is brought finally before the City Council. This is the process that the applicant went through. Final approval of a resolution approving the service plan may be granted by the City Council, and the applicant may then proceed to holding an election of board members for the new metro district. The proposed service plan would enable a financing mechanism only, and it does not approve or entitle any land within the boundary of the proposed metro district. So this image is based on the city's zoning map and depicts the land that is to be served by the proposed metro district, which is outlined in yellow. It's approximately 77.55 acres and is bounded on the east by Santa Fe Drive and city-owned land or the South Platte Park on the west. Privately owned land, including the Equine Center and Woolhurst Mobile Home Community, bounds the site to the south, and the land owned by the Evergreen Mineral and Santa Fe LLC Development Team bounds the property to the north. Dad Clark Gulch generally runs from east to west across the site, and the Englewood City Ditch meanders its way through the site on its way to the City of Denver's parks, generally from south to north. The site's location relative to C470, Santa Fe Drive, Mineral Avenue, and the RTD Light Rail Station at the intersection of Mineral Avenue and Santa Fe Drive ensures access to the city and region. So I'm going to begin our discussion about approval criteria number one and the analysis of it. So review criteria number one of the policy requires an analysis by staff of the service plan's content against the city's policy. The proposed service plan envisions four metropolitan districts. There we go, using my mouse here. I'm going to help illustrate this, make sense of this illustration for you. Districts one here and two, sorry, one here and two here, thank you, will construct the two residential districts, and District three here will construct, operate, and maintain the mixed-use district. District four, represented by the hatchmark, is responsible for operating and maintaining districts one and two. We are going to continue discussing approval criteria number one. In this case, the proposed service plan is found to comply with the city's policy by establishing district powers and purpose, setting a 40-year debt repayment term, and establishing mill levy rates for the purpose of repaying debt, and operating and maintaining public and regional improvements. 40 mills are proposed for the public improvements, and 12 mills are proposed for the regional improvements. Combined, it comes to 52 mills. The typical mill levy cap for other metropolitan districts in the state of Colorado is currently between 60 and 70 mills. So while the 52 mills is beyond the recommended 40-mill cap in the model service plan, the proposed 52 is still less than many other metro districts in the state of Colorado.
Elizabeth, if I could interrupt you with a question?
Sir.
So, I mean, didn't we just a few moments ago, when hearing from the City Attorney, establish that at least from the perspective of the Office of the City Attorney Council intended to adopt a 35-year cap on the repayment term? Why are we hearing from staff that a 40-year repayment term is consistent with policy?
I would say that because we just discerned this a couple hours ago and hadn't changed the PowerPoint. That's one of the things that council is really going to have to consider as the applicant makes their presentation. Does council want to allow a 40-year repayment term, or does council want to go with the policy that council had adopted last year and stick with 35? And if council's decision after hopefully hearing from the applicant and is 35, then we'll make a, you know, we'll make an amendment to the service plan to change 40 to 35, and then the applicant can figure out if they want to have their election with the service plan that's been approved or wait for another time.
Councilmember Grove?
Along those same lines, we spent a lot of time on the number of mills, as you remember, and all of a sudden now 40 is, it's no longer the cap, it's 52. So it seems like we made a policy, now we're going around the policy. I'm not talking about the 40 years, that's probably maybe a typo or whatever, but I'm talking about the regional improvements on top of the 40-year limit.
That was part of the, that's not, that is consistent with what council...
It's consistent with the policy.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shall I proceed?
Yeah, continue, please. Thank you.
Continuing with the review of the approval criteria number one, the proposed service plan is also in keeping with the city's policy because it articulates the district and developer capital costs for the public improvements within each district as well as the regional
Another question, I'm sorry, Elizabeth. This is for the City Attorney. What's meant by regional? What qualifies?
I do have a slide. We could kind of jump ahead a little bit. We're about to address that.
The definition. I know we're going to talk about sort of what comes under the heading.
So there is something called Exhibit B in the policy that's provided to applicants, and that's where the city articulates what we mean by regional. And there is a table that provides a series of criteria of different kinds of improvements. They could be infrastructure-related, they could be recreation and open space-related amenities, and there's an opportunity for the applicant to propose improvements and amenities and make an argument on their behalf that those amenities go beyond simple public improvements, that they have a reach in helping to further and achieve some strategic city goals, as well as city goals related to smart growth strategies, and the applicant has done that. And it is, I can show you, it's part of the application, in fact, there's a, it's a pretty lengthy table where they are explaining the improvement that they are developing and how, what the ways and means are that it is in fact regional, and how it is helping to achieve, like I said, strategic city goals or smart growth goals.
This is in the service plan?
It's in the staff report. It was part of the application made by the applicant. It's a component of the policy that the applicant is required to respond to.
I'll wait and see where we get.
Okay, okay. So, moving right along, let's talk about the regional improvements.
I'm sorry, we have Councilmember Renicki has a question.
Oh, sorry.
Still confused. When council put a cap of 40 mills, what was the definition of 40 mills? Did it include debt and operation, or one or both? Or one or the other, I should say?
It was a cap on both, debt and operations mills.
But here we have staff recommending approval on 52.
Because, so, right, so the 40, so we've got two different kinds of improvements going on here. There are the public improvements, which are specific to serve the proposed development. Then there are the regional improvements, which are also... Then there are the regional improvements, which are also within the development, but they have a larger reach and are more impactful to the city, to more of the public than simply the improvements within the bounds of the proposed new community. So the 40 is to address the public improvements. The additional 12 is to address the regional improvements. And I'm about to read the, I'm gonna read to you out loud the list of each of the improvements, each of the public, and then each of the regional.
Thanks.
So here goes. Okay. So this image shows the location, use this mouse, of each of the regional improvements, which are a, here we go, using my mouse, a 10-foot-wide regional trail within a 50-foot-wide buffer, landscaped buffer, along the entire western and northern border of the site, which includes an at-grade crossing of the realigned Dad Clark Gulch for pedestrian and cyclists at the northern boundary of the site, and fencing along the entire western and part of the northern boundary, and appropriate landscaping within the 50-foot-wide buffer, which protects and aligns with South Platte Park management goals, and Platte River Parkway, which extends north to south through the entire site, and especially includes a 12-foot-wide shared-use path to accommodate pedestrians and cyclists, and East Phillips Avenue, here in purple, which provides the main entry to the site and connects Santa Fe Drive to the Platte River Parkway, and a rerouted, a rerouted and undergrounded Englewood City Ditch, which delivers water to Denver's Washington Park and City Park and achieves the City of Englewood's goal of undergrounding that important water infrastructure, and in this area here, a replica of the old barn on the site is proposed for this area here, which incorporates as much reclaimed original material as possible from the original barn, along with interpretive signage, plaques, photos of the original barn, and plentiful seating, and an associated parking lot, right there, with landscaping and lighting to serve the replica barn and the Central Park to the south of the parking lot, and improvements to the intersection with Mineral Avenue and Santa Fe Drive. So that is the list of regional improvements per the proposed service plan.
So, I guess let me renew my question then. So I get that staff and/or the applicant believe this list of projects, each of them qualifies as a regional improvement?
Yes.
My question is, what's the definition under our policy or elsewhere of what qualifies as a regional improvement, so I can do my own analysis about whether or not these do in fact qualify as regional improvements, right? We can't make them regional improvements simply by calling them regional improvements. I need to screen them against the text of the policy, especially if the applicant's asking for 12 additional mils, so.
So I should correct, so to answer your question, Exhibit A of the city's policy is called Public Benefit Examples. It has a series of categories and subcategories, including critical public infrastructure, both within the district area and adjacent to the proposed district, of which open space beyond code requirements, regional stormwater improvements, major arterial development, parking structures that are publicly accessible, transit-oriented development, non-motorized transportation opportunities, and adjacent to proposed development could be things such as contributions to major interchanges and intersections, contributions to grade-separated auto or pedestrian crossings, and connection to transit. It goes on further under the subcategory of high-quality and smart-growth management to have a subcategory called walkability and pedestrian friendliness. Those things include wider-than-city-required sidewalks, enhanced pedestrian crossings, which include different materials raised and signalized, underpasses or overpasses, trail system and wayfinding enhancements, streetscape amenities such as planters, benches, and trash receptacles. Another subcategory is increased availability of transit. So that would be improvements such as improved bus stops with shelters, restricted-access guideways for bus operations, transfer facilities, and pedestrian connections to transit. There's a subcategory called Public Spaces. That includes pocket parks, neighborhood parks beyond code requirements, high-quality streetscape, landscaping, and artwork, a community center, community pool, or gathering space for more than 100 people. There's another category called Strategic Priorities. The first one is called Affordable Housing, and by that we mean units that could be permanently affordable to 80% area median income, or land dedicated to city for future use. There's also a category called Attainable Housing. That includes units permanently affordable to 81 to 120% of area median income. There's another subcategory called Infill/Redevelopment, and that could include things like addressing environmental sensitivity, consolidating wetlands or natural areas so that there is a net positive benefit to the community, locating new residences in close proximity to a wide variety of transit choices, urban design that prioritizes walkers, cyclists, and wheelchair users above automobile users, and I think the last category here is economic health outcomes, and that is to deal with facilitating job growth that focuses on a net increase to the city's sales tax base or employment centers. So, the applicant was required to address each one of those in their application, and they did so. And it's, actually, so right, in the service plan, that lives now as Exhibit G, as in Gary. And you can read, here, I'll hold it up to show you. They took the word version, and they wrote a narrative in the right-hand column explaining each of the components of the proposal that they believed met one or some, certainly not all. They did not achieve all of these. They met some of the...
What page are we referencing?
Oh, my gosh. I'm gonna guess, here, wait, let me pull it up. It is...
Right in the middle.
While we're waiting, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Could we determine whether or not the extent of this answer is what councilmember Malin wants, or is it more than you want?
Well, yeah, thank you for prompting me. I actually did have a follow-up question.
Got it.
And I'm not trying to be difficult, I really am just trying to have clarity. I didn't hear the word regional sort of anywhere in that answer. Is that list of things, what the applicant is calling regional, what we are here tonight calling regional, what the proposed service plan is calling regional?
Correct, as sort of a way to distinguish between and to be able to describe those items that go beyond what is simply termed public improvements.
Yeah, I would say kind of the differentiation is, you know, when we talk about what a public improvement is, what you would typically see is literally road, sidewalk, curb, gutter, sewer, stormwater, all those things. Those would be public improvements, and those are public improvements needed to actually get the, you know, houses in the ground and serviced. When we talk about public benefits as it was defined in our, in our policy, that's what we're kind of using, we're calling them now, regional benefits, because it's easier to kind of differentiate those between a public improvement and a public benefit as opposed to a regional benefit. So the list that Ms. Marquetti went through is some of the examples, and it's not an exhaustive list of, you know, what can be done, but really what is going in that's going to be designed to help residents of our city and not this specific development. And so, you know, you could use your imagination, and I guess it's probably somewhat subjective in terms of if you feel that's a benefit to you, that, you know, they put a buffer on, you know, the west side of their parcel. I don't know. To each their own, but...
Got it. Okay, thanks.
It may be helpful if we can get through the presentations and then line up all those questions and hit them after the applicant has a chance.
We're almost through the presentation, so I think we're good.
Close.
Yep.
Counselor Malin, page 91 is where that starts. So, again, this is the, this is the image of the proposed regional improvements.
And that appendix is called Public Improvements. Got it. Thank you.
It's Exhibit G, Public Benefits. Correct. So, we're still talking about approval criteria one, and this image is now a discussion of the public improvements. This image shows the location of each of the public improvements, which are water, sanitary sewer, and storm lines and sewers within Platte River Parkway here, and East Phillips Avenue here, the realigned landscaped and fenced Dad Clark Gulch here, and the curb, gutter, sidewalk, storm sewer, signage, and traffic lights for the intersection of East Phillips Avenue and Santa Fe Drive here, the Central Park and its landscaping here, the water, stormwater, curb, gutter, sidewalk, roadway, and signage for the street from Platte River Parkway to the neighborhood security gate, which is here, and streets, streetlights, and two stormwater management ponds within Parcels H and I of the Santa Fe Park South Plan Development, which is this area here, the bridge and its abutments on Platte River Parkway that will span the Dad Clark Gulch here, and grading landscaping a stormwater pond and drainage channel in Parcel J here of the Santa Fe Park South Plan Development, that's the areas in yellow, and water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, curb, gutter, sidewalk, roadway, and striping, signage, streetlights, stormwater pond, and landscaping of the Mixed Use District Three in Lavender. That is the list of the proposed public improvements. Wrapping up our discussion of approval criteria one at last, this image is an aggregate of all of the above, and the proposed public and regional improvements, if constructed, would support and implement the following 11 comprehensive plan goals and policies. Land use and community character goal one, a land use allocation and pattern that supports and promotes Littleton's pride in and reputation for quality neighborhoods and an abundance of parks and preserved open space. Land use and community character policy five, manage land use patterns near Littleton's many parks, trails, greenways, and open spaces to protect their ecological functions, prevent physical and other impactful encroachments, maintain public access, and preserve their overall quality and value, especially where public green spaces contribute to neighborhood character and enhance business park and other commercial settings. Housing and Neighborhoods goal five, housing that supports choice in mobility and investments in transportation infrastructure. Housing and Neighborhoods policy four, encourage mixed-use development proposals that include a residential component, especially where this will support retail viability and transit ridership, place residents near education and local employment options, and provide living options for seniors and others close to transit, parks, and shopping, medical, and other services. Infrastructure and Services goal one, well-maintained water, wastewater, and storm drainage infrastructure that serves the needs of Littleton residents and businesses while minimizing adverse impacts on the environment, and Infrastructure and Services policy four, be a prepared and resilient community with city infrastructure and services that can recover quickly from the effects of severe weather and natural hazards, and which manages growth and development to reduce risks. Transportation Master Plan goal four, contribute to our economic prosperity while maintaining and enhancing our community's character. Heritage, arts, recreation, and tourism goal one, preserved and enhanced public green spaces that provide access to nature, widespread opportunities for recreation and play close to home, and continuous greenway connections within and through the city. Heritage, arts, recreation, and tourism goal two, continued protection and promotion of Littleton's heritage, especially where it is tangibly visible in historic architecture, designated districts and landmarks, and distinctive neighborhoods and buildings. Heritage, arts, recreation, and tourism goal three, a healthy community with convenient access to recreational facilities and programming and outdoor fitness activities. Special Areas and Design goal four, roadway corridors that fulfill their primary transportation functions for drivers, pedestrians, cyclists, and public transit while advancing the community's economic development, housing, and aesthetic interests. We are moving on to review criteria number two, which requires city staff to evaluate the district's debt capacity and servicing ability. The proposed service plan contains a financial plan and operations projections, both of which comply with the city's policy. The financial plan establishes the timing and build-out values, which are based upon projected assessed values, and the 40-year debt repayment term, which is a typical timeframe for metro districts in the state of Colorado. The proposed service plan also contains operations projections, which address the operation and maintenance of the public and regional improvements. The proposed debt scenario and the operations projections meet the policy and demonstrate an ability to serve the four districts. We're on to review criteria number three. This directs city staff to evaluate the proposed service plan against the policy and the city's model service plan, which is a part of the city's policy, and identify and evaluate any differences. The only difference is the proposed combined 52 mils. All other aspects of the proposed service plan align with the policy and with the model service plan. As a reminder, the policy allows for a mill levy greater than 40 mils if the mils beyond 40 are in support of amenities that are quote "high-quality smart growth and/or strategic priorities of the city," end quote. The service plan provides such items in the form of the fenced, landscaped 50-foot-wide buffer and its 10-foot-wide regional trail, the realigned and undergrounded Englewood City Ditch, the replica of the old barn with accompanying parking, and the 12-foot-wide shared-use path along the east side of the entire Platte River Parkway. Therefore, city staff recommends approval of resolution 27-2021, which approves the service plan for the Santa Fe Park Metropolitan District numbers one through four. To reiterate, the applicant, Santa Fe Park LLC, is requesting approval by the city council of resolution number 27-2021, which would approve the proposed service plan for four new metropolitan districts called Santa Fe Park Metropolitan Districts numbers one through four. This concludes my presentation. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Following me is attorney Megan Murphy, applicant on behalf of Santa Fe Park LLC, who will also make a presentation.
Great. Thank you, Elizabeth. We have a questionnaire for mayor. Hold on.
Yeah, this is for the consultant. Can you talk to us about the absence of fees in this service plan, please?
The applicant has stated that they don't anticipate fees will be needed, and there will be no fees on the end user for the repayment of debt. So that would be based on the, they've used in the application 38 mils for debt, and there's no other revenue streams for debt, so they have not displayed a need for a fee in the area of debt. On operations, what we have is just an estimate of what the four mils brings. On operations, what we have is just an estimate of what the 4 mils brings. That would be supplemented by the developer in this case, probably until the district itself could be financially independent and able to generate its own operations. So, so far, no fees have been stated that they will be needed.
Can you help us make sense of what that means? Is that unusual, or is that typical?
What we have is really a scenario of what this might look like. It might be as they develop that they decide, "We really need, you know, 10 or 15 mils for debt," and so they'll issue less than the 38 for... I'm sorry, 10 to 15 for operations. So, as they get further into the project, they should be able to estimate what they need for operations. This is one scenario here. They may actually use more of the mil levy. You have a cap up to half or 20 mils for operations. They may actually decide to use more for operations and less for debt. And then not impose any O&M fees.
Is there any scenario where, in the future, they would impose fees that are not proposed now?
I would defer to Megan Murphy to answer a question like that on behalf of her applicant or her client.
Sure, come on up. And while you're coming up, I do have one question for the consultant. When I look at the regional infrastructure improvements, and, you know, who owns what and who maintains it? What leverage do we have if the metro districts decide not to maintain it, for whatever reason?
Anything that they pay for and reimburse for, and is not given to the city or another governmental entity, they have the obligation to maintain that. Legal ramifications there? Reed, I'm not sure. But what is their obligation from a legal standpoint, and what recourse do you have if they don't maintain the public improvements they keep?
Those that aren't dedicated to the city.
Correct, those that are not.
And it would be possible going forward, you know, if there was any material or significant change to the service plan, that's something they would have to come back to the city to get approval for. So if they started changing as it relates to what they're servicing debt for, what they're servicing O&M for, that would presumably be a material change to the service plan that would require council approval. So there is some oversight going forward.
Great. Tyler, I think we're going to go ahead and take a 10-minute break, so you can... If you don't mind. Okay, so it is 8:18, so we'll be back at 8:28.
Through adaptation and creativity, the city of Littleton showed great resilience in 2020, and is now turning its attention to another challenge.
In just four short years, our Capital Projects Fund, which pays for road maintenance, building repairs, and equipment that touches residents every day, is projected to be depleted.
This revenue shortfall is due to increasing capital and infrastructure demands, rising maintenance and repair costs, unreliable revenue streams, an historically low tax rate, and limited fees. In fact, Littleton's sales tax rate has not increased in 50 years, making it lower than the metro-wide average of 3.5%.
In Littleton, we have identified about 70 unfunded capital and infrastructure projects over the next 15 years with a price tag of about $98 million, or about $6.5 million annually.
The value Littleton places on small government, low taxes, and independent retail is both a blessing and a challenge.
This spring, we launched a research and community engagement project to gather feedback from our constituents on possible funding solutions. Later this summer, city council will decide on a fix, and it could lead to a question on the November ballot. I encourage citizens to visit our website and read about the solutions under consideration.
For 126 years, families, civic leaders, businesses, volunteers, and educators have worked to make Littleton the amazing community it is today. Planning for the future will ensure Littleton continues to be one of the best places in Colorado to own a business, learn, live, raise a family, and retire.
Have you been out and about and seen an issue? Well, don't trip. Just get the Littleton See Click Fix app. Report non-emergency issues or concerns with See Click Fix 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. Submit issues such as potholes, icy or damaged sidewalk, graffiti, missing or damaged street signs, abandoned vehicles, weeds or trash, and other code violations or concerns. Littleton staff will respond to reports Monday through Friday during business hours. Issues reported outside the Littleton city limits will generate a warning that the location is not within the city boundary. Review the See Click Fix dashboard to track previously submitted issues and requests. For more information about See Click Fix, visit See Click Fix on the City of Littleton's webpage.
All right, we're about to hear a presentation from our applicant. Thank you.
Is...this is on? Okay, great. Can...oh, and this is on too? Great.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to tell our...okay, I am calling the order...the meeting back to order at 8:28. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Megan Murphy from the firm White Bear Ankle to Naca and Waldron, here on behalf of the applicant. And I just...I have a separate presentation, but we've talked so much about 35 years and 40 mils, I thought, "Let's just cut to the chase and talk about that first." So you'll see on your screen a letter from my office, sent to your office on July 13th. And in here, this issue came up, all the way down, so many great comments. Pinnacle flagged that your policy and your model service plan are inconsistent, right? Your policy says 35 years, the model service plan attached to your policy says 40 years. We, the applicant, submitted on your policy, went through a whole round of review, flagged this, and heard a response from Pinnacle that while there is an inconsistency, 40 years is standard market and does comply with the model service plan provided. Tonight, when we walked into the public hearing, we were alerted that this is, again, an issue. You can imagine my client's surprise, more than a month after we sent this letter flagging this issue, that we believed we were coming in tonight, 40 years, good faith on your policy. So I want to turn it over to Brooke Hutchins from DA Davidson. She's the underwriter, and she's going to talk to you about what the difference between 35 years and 40 years means for my client. I'll step back, and Brooke will take the lectern.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate your time tonight. I kind of wanted to clarify, as we speak a lot of jargon when we're talking about finance, what the 35 versus 40 years means. So, at the start, our goal in financing bonds for the district are to pay for those public improvements that otherwise would not have a source of tax-exempt funding. And so our goal is to borrow at the lowest cost of capital to fund those improvements. The way we will structure the bonds, and it's typical in the bond market, is to have a 30-year maturity on the bonds, meaning we fully expect those bonds to repay by 30 years. The 35 or 40 are an additional cushion for investors should something not happen per projections. So we fully anticipate 30-year repayment in either case. If we have a 35-year discharge date, that's the last year that a district could impose a mil levy, the interest rate that a future investor, a bond buyer, would pay for that bond will be slightly higher than if it were 40 years of cushion. So effectively, by giving the district 40, you are helping them achieve a lower borrowing cost to fund the public improvements. And so that is why we respectfully request the 40. We understand that the two different interpretations put this in an awkward spot, but that is why...the background of why we would prefer 40 to 35.
Brooke, can I ask a question? I'm in the mortgage industry. Can we just put it in mortgage terms? Can you say you can either have a 30-year mortgage or a 15-year mortgage? The longer the mortgage, you know...so you're talking about a 40-year amortization as opposed to a 30-year amortization or a 35-year amortization? Is that...is that close?
So I would say, in either case, we're talking about a 30-year amortization. That's traditional municipal bond finance term of debt. It really is, after that 30 years, is there any runway, if things don't go perfectly, to have additional years for repayment? And so, you know, being able to bond against 30 years and have a little more cushion means that the borrowing cost to fund those public improvements is lower. By about 50 basis points is kind of the rough math in today's market.
So would that mean that the citizens in that community pay less over 40 years than if they were to pay in 35 years?
They pay less towards interest. I think that's a fair assertion, yes.
Sorry, that sounded like a caveat. Where do they pay more, if anywhere?
Oh, no, just they do pay less interest. That is definitely true.
They pay less interest, but for five years longer.
The same number of years? It would still be 30 years, but let's take a hypothetical example. At...in today's market, if we had the proposed 40 discharge date, the borrowing cost to the district would be around 4.5% if that discharge date was 35 years. So we're still out talking 30-year debt, 30-year expected repayment, in either case. But if the discharge was in 35, instead of borrowing at 4.5, they'd be closer to 4.75. So effectively, this extra window helps pay less in interest overall for the district.
So, why not 45 years? Why not 50?
I think there's a balance, and in the market...
I think so.
That 10-year is standard, sort of across service plans, across districts, and that's sort of the point of total neutrality to, "Why not 41, why not 42?" In response to where the market prices risk, 10 years is about the neutral balancing point between residents' interests and efficient financing.
Again, continue.
And with that, I'll turn it back to Megan.
Thank you very much. Hey, Councilmember Fay?
City Attorney, can you remind us of why we went for 35 years? What were we trying to do?
That's what I'm trying to think.
I don't remember this at all. It was a long time ago.
Yeah, I think generally it was to protect kind of the end user and making sure that they were not going to be paying this indefinitely. One of the things that you had seen is kind of the reissuance of bonds, kind of the refinancing, if you will, the extension of what was believed to be 30 years, and it's suddenly 50 years, 60 years, and the debt never gets extinguished. And so those were some of the thoughts that at least Council had at that time. In fact, we allowed for the refinancing, if you will, as long as it stayed within that current term of the debt service term. So I think, believe that was the concern of City Council at the time, trying to get rid of, you know, the payment on the actual issuance of that debt. O and M is O and M, but, you know, the basic public infrastructure, we can't pay that forever. So reduce the burden on end users.
Okay. Okay, so that's the 40, 35 years from the applicant's perspective. Then we'll switch over to the presentation. Staff provided you with an excellent background. We're here tonight asking for approval of a consolidated service plan. We believe this service plan complies with your policy and your model, and staff does too. Here's a map. Here's a map. You saw a lot of maps. What's going on here? So we've got four different districts. The idea is two residential districts, as Ms. Marquetti said, that are constructing residential public improvements. And then in Hatch, you'll see an overlay. That's intended to operate improvements in the residential districts because those improvements benefit both home users, residents, taxpayers in the yellow and the blue. So it'd be nice if they could be on a board together and talk about flowers, landscaping, et cetera. The mixed use is separate. It's not just traditional for sale residential built by Toll Brothers, so it's in its own district. Here's some key terms. Let's talk about money. So your policy and your model service plan sets a base case scenario, and that's what we call public improvements. That's the 40 mils. Says applicant, show us your public improvements. What can you pay for with 40 mils? And then you leave the door open. You say applicant, if you have more improvements, you can ask for more mils. That's what you see as regional. That's what we're trying to do here tonight. So we believe we've proven your base case for public improvements, 40 mils. We're asking for 12 mils to fund the additional 6.5 million in improvements, which Ms. Marquetti reviewed in great detail. That was a very long list. Questions on those two differences? Here's some other key terms that we just kind of breeze, breeze through, excuse me. 40 mils, that's the public improvements, it's debt and O and M. Now, your service plan, what you're approving tonight, gives flexibility to the applicant to work within that 40 mil box. So we're not saying tonight, 2 mils for O and M, 4.5 mils for O and M. Nobody's saying a number for O and M. We have an estimate in the service plan, but your policy and your service plan gives us a box of 40 mils. We need that flexibility because you haven't helped my client on the private side figure out what we are maintaining. What's the plat look like? What's the park look like? What's all the details of this project? So we don't know tonight if it's 1 mils, 2 mils, 5 mils. It's an unknown number. Does that make sense? Okay. The regional O and M mill levy, we took a look at the regional improvements. What do we think it'll cost to operate? We think 2, so we've asked for 2. What do we think it'll cost to finance? 10, so we've asked for 10. That's how you get to 52. Any questions about that part? Okay. Brooke checked my math on that, so I feel good. How does this break down as compared to the map you saw earlier? So District 4 isn't just funding regional. Remember, it's doing O and M. So it gets a little confusing, we get a little mismatched on our math. You can see here the acreage as compared to the cost of improvements, if that information is helpful. And this is just the public improvements.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So District 4 is the, predominantly the regional then? Is that correct? Which is, which is the fence and some other stuff going around?
So metro districts have a somewhat confusing and lucky feature in that we can maintain things both inside and outside of our boundaries. So if we go back many pages to the map, the purpose of District 4 is to operate improvements that serve two different residential districts. And the thinking behind that is, if you live in the yellow, you're probably going to use a park in the blue. So let's have one board maintain that and make decisions about that, that they can both be on. But it's not directly tied to the improvements. They're all funding this entire bucket of improvements.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the question. I think we were here. Any questions on this one? So who's going to be operating this project? Who's going to be involved in this project? And the underlying land developers, Toll Brothers, there's two representatives from Toll Brothers here tonight who'd be happy to talk to you about America's luxury home builder. Toll Brothers has many projects in the metro area. They use metropolitan districts. They are a publicly traded company, have a lot of experience developing residential units in metro districts. Who's going to be the manager? Who's going to make sure the snow gets removed, et cetera? Right now, these districts don't exist, so there's no district board to vote and approve a management contract. But the thinking is that the management trust, which is a company name of a manager, is going to be engaged as a district manager. They're a professional company that specializes in managing districts and A-ways. What do you need to find, to find in favor of the applicant tonight and approve the service plan? Here's the criteria. Staff did a wonderful job providing you with even additional criteria. This is just from Title 32. This doesn't override your very detailed policy with all of your criteria. But the gist is, do you think a metro district is needed to make this project work and fund these improvements that no other municipality, county, district is willing to fund and build? And I think the answer to that is yes. What's the benefits of approving this? Well, you get a lot of new homeowners in your city. You get mixed-use development. You get funding of regional improvements. You get funding of public improvements. Again, as Ms. Marquetti said, this is not an approval of underlying land development. So all of those details will be worked out at many public hearings with Platts, zoning, et cetera. But you would be granting the applicant a box from which to finance those improvements once they are determined. That's in my, yes, sir?
Yeah, I had asked earlier, is there any scenario where the metro district would impose fees that are not identified currently?
Oh, yes, let's, let's go to that. So your model service plan has a very detailed provision about fees, and I'm going to show it to you. I think you're seeing that. Oh, boy, did I miss it? Let me do a search, be sure to find it. We can be sure to get you the very best information.
Yes.
Okay.
Indeed.
So this is the exact language of your model service plan that you approved when you approved a policy?
What page you want?
This is page 12 of the PDF. That's the service plan, but this is not linked to a packet. So it's page 12 of the really big service plan. Page 9 of the policy. Thank you, Ms. Marquetti.
Thank you.
So your model service plan, at the time it is approved, says, as Ms. Dowell Smith said, you can't impose a fee for debt on an end user. Who's an end user? Think of someone who buys a home, someone who rents an apartment. Not a fee for debt. It does leave the door open to impose fees to fund operations, maintenance, repair, replacement of public improvements, or the administration of the district. And you might be thinking, how can we know what this fee will be? And I'm thinking the same thing, because we don't know the public improvements associated with this project, so we can't know the fee. But what we do know is it's limited to the public improvements. So you'll notice it doesn't include the term regional improvement, so it's not fees for that item. And it's only allowed to fund public improvements, fees have to be for services. So it's not as if this is an infinite box. It's tied to the public improvements that are in the exhibits to the service plan. Is that all making sense? Does that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, well, it's not just O and M, though, right? It says right there, repair, replacement, and public improvements, which, all of that may be seriously expensive to the end users, right?
I, I-
Here the barn's falling down. I guess that would be a regional improvement. Whatever the public improvement analog of that is, it needs to be replaced. I mean, we can expect, can't we, that a fee's going to be imposed? I mean, count on it, anyway.
You have a question? Oh, go ahead. Did you get your answer, first of all? Okay, if, if, Councilmember Fay?
We don't have a lot of experience with metro districts. The experience that we have, and this might be more for the city manager than, than for you, we have experience with one particular metro district which has been, it's in my district, it's been really bad. Is there a way to ensure that things like that don't happen? Or is that a luck of the draw? And if there is a way, are we doing it right now?
I think I actually might have a response to this one after you guys go.
Yeah, I would defer to Ms. Murphy. I think the applicant is aware that there might be certain council members, or all of council members, who might be comparing how this metro district stacks up against another metro district that shall not be named. And what are the real fundamental differences between this one and the other one? And what are the assurances that the same thing won't happen here?
Lots of promises were made, lots. The list is kind of like the list we heard, but it didn't turn out that way.
And we do have other districts in the city. I know South Platte was, South Park was a-
South Park.
Right. And there are some successes since I've been on council and planning commission.
Sure. And some of those, you know, they retired their, their debt in terms of-
Exactly.
They still have some O and M, but nothing-
I think the one that's an issue right now that we're not naming, that's the only one that I know that's been an issue.
It's like Voldemort.
Yeah, yeah. I know Councilmember Milliman would like to turn in.
And I would like to say that there is a very successful metro district development trail mark, which is in my district, in District 4. It's been hugely successful. It's a fantastic neighborhood, and I would like to recognize that as an alternate-
Wait, we have a point of order that's been called. Go ahead.
Point of order. I, we weren't finished getting my question addressed at all. We were far from it.
So let us see if Ms. Murphy might be able to differentiate between the two districts to hopefully everyone's satisfaction.
Thank you for the opportunity. So I'm here talking about Santa Fe Park, and I think we're talking about a district that might have a similar name to the city. Is that correct? But we will not say that name out loud. Okay, understood. Thank you. So I can say that I have spoken to general counsel for, I'll call it, the other district. And my understanding is that district has failed to thrive due to some operational issues and perhaps some issues with the land developer, builder. And I don't believe that those are the same facts you're presenting with here tonight. Toll Brothers, America's luxury home builder, is a nationally recognized builder that you may have heard of before. And in addition to that, I believe comparing the two projects would be akin to comparing Littleton to somewhere like Aurora. The facts are just so completely different, and I can tell you for certain, since I was in Aurora on Monday night, the energy is just so completely different. We're talking about apples and oranges. And I'd also like to highlight this page in the service plan that I hope you're seeing about material modifications. I know the spacing's kind of odd on this big screen, but you'll notice that number two, material modification is a concept that allows the governing jurisdiction to basically say, hey, metropolitan district, we don't think you're playing by the rules. We've got some questions. Please come in and answer them. And one of those things that we might not be playing by the rules is performance of a service or function, construction of an improvement, or acquisition of a major facility. So should there be some questions about whatever the public improvements end up being approved for this project, and you think it's not going well, you as city council, with the help of your attorney and city staff, can pursue a material modification. And I think I'd just like to leave it at that. These are just two very different projects, and I'd like to keep it focused on Santa Fe Park. I know you have some questions, and I think that really hinges on your faith in the underlying developer for the project.
Good enough.
Does that answer your question?
Ms. Mayor.
Mark's going to-
Yes, Mark.
I think I just would add that one of the steps for a project of this magnitude is this consideration this evening, a metro district. There are other steps that would follow that I believe would be a distinction. A security improvement agreement is probably one of the more major ones that if a project moves forward, is securing those improvements. And I think that would be a distinction, and certainly a lesson learned from the past that I, we would apply in this particular instance.
Great, thank you. All right, I'm going to go over to Councilmember Milliman and then Grove, and if you can, keep, make sure our questions or comments are to what we're talking about here tonight. Go ahead. Oh, okay, Councilmember Grove.
So from past experience, we've learned that if we don't get the commercial development, which helps with the debt, then all the debt falls on the residents. What plans do we have, and maybe I missed it in this 150-page document, that make sure that, that we get the commercial development that helps pay down the debt and offsets the burden to the residents?
There is nothing in this service plan that guarantees any development whatsoever. I want to be very open and honest about that. So it doesn't guarantee a single rooftop will be built, doesn't guarantee a single square foot of commercial. It estimates that those things will be built, and the protection for the residents is, I'll say, hopefully, the 40-year term and the maximum mill levies. So the maximum mill levies are in the service plan, and that means if only one home is built in this project, let's say, very, very worst-case scenario, one home is built, the metro district can only impose up to the 52 mil. I'm just assuming everything is approved as drafted, can only impose up to the 52 mils. That brings in what it brings in. The risk that that's not enough to pay the outstanding debt is borne by the bondholders.
So to carry your scenario a little further, what happens if you build these roads and you have this one house or a few houses or whatever it is, and the 52 mils don't cover some basics like snow removal or water? Then you start putting fees on top because you have to in order to get to your home? I mean, I'm concerned about the protection of the residents who have property taxes, like we heard in the Denver Post articles years ago, that go up and up.
Sure. So let's separate those two, just so I can be sure I'm answering the question. So the protection for property taxes is contained in the service plan. That's going to be a fixed set number. That's going to be, I hope, 52 mils for 40 years. The protection for fees is it only goes to fund services. So if you have one house, I guess however much it costs to remove snow for that one house is the fee that we can impose, which is probably going to be, I would guess, a pretty low number. But I'm not an expert, perhaps someone else who contracts those services.
I see where you're going. I was just trying to-
But as the project scales down, the fees scale down. As the project scales up, the fees can scale up because more services are being provided. Does that make sense? It's not a fee for having a good time.
I just want to make sure that the residents aren't burdened by debt because of lack of development on the commercial side or some other loopholes in the service plan.
Yeah, and I want to be really honest that this does not guarantee any commercial development. This simply provides a financing mechanism should that development come online. The market will decide how much debt could be issued based on projections for commercial development and a market study. Does that make sense?
Soon as she's done.
No. Okay, do I need Brooke to help me? Brooke's, Brooke's got the numbers.
What you're telling me is if you can't get commercial, can't get commercial, and then we're back to the residents funding all the debt, which is where we are in our other situation, which is just crushing them. And, you know, they, they have a huge hole in the middle of their street, and they, there's nothing they can do about it. Nobody can fix it because they don't have any money. I mean, it's kind of a worst-case scenario, but we have to kind of, that's our experience. I mean, it's kind of a worst-case scenario, but we have to kind of, that's our experience, fortunately and unfortunately.
Oh, in the other place. Oh, I see. I see where we're going. Okay. So maybe Brooke can jump in and help me, but what I'm saying is that nobody's crushed when you have a maximum mill levy for a maximum term. It's a guaranteed number, 52 mills for hopefully 40 years. So it can't be 56, it can't be 62, it can't be some other number in the sky. It's the number that you hopefully approve tonight, and I hope it's 52 mills.
As long as you don't add fees on top.
Fees for O and M, so we're talking, yeah.
And repair and replacement is the language of the policy that you pulled up.
Yeah, I guess I view that as operations and maintenance, but it sounds like we might have a difference where you're viewing that as capital.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Can I suggest we stop comparing two projects? This is ridiculous.
What I would like to do is-
Focusing on this project, please.
Exactly.
I think it's our experience. I think it's very relevant.
Well, it's not relevant at all. Totally two different projects.
Exactly. What I'd like to do is go ahead and get through your presentation, Ms. Murphy's presentation, then we have to go to public comment. We've got to keep this thing moving if we can, so.
Oh, we've reached the end of the slideshow.
Oh, okay, cool.
Yeah. So I'll step away now.
Counsel, I'd like to go to public comments at this point, at public hearing. All right.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure, go ahead.
So I don't know, maybe did Jennifer or Michael, that piece of property, if you could maybe review it again, what it's currently zoned as? It's majority residential, is that correct? What's the percentage of commercial? Or Elizabeth, sorry?
Sure, so it is currently zoned PD. It is known as the Santa Fe Park Plan Development, and it is a mixed-use plan development. And it distinguishes, so, we spoke briefly about parcels H and I, and that's where the homes are going to be built. So there are parcels A through J.
Can I do a point of order here? This really isn't important for what we're voting on tonight, in my opinion.
I agree with you, so we're going to keep moving on. I would like to get to the public hearing at this point, okay? All right, so I'm going to open up the public hearing. It is 8:57. I don't have a card. If you can just hang on one second. And counsel, if you have questions, we'll have questions after public hearing. So we're getting the sign-up card. Are there any names on there? Oh, okay, we have Pam Chadbourne. No, it's okay, thank you.
I'm Pam Chadbourne. I still live a block and a half from here in District One. It seems to me that fundamentally, there's clearly confusion on council's part about the intention of the limit on the cap on the mill levy, and that the intention of council was not to be higher than 40. That's the way I remember it. What I remember, so one thing to comment on is metropolitan districts in the past, a couple decades ago, seem to have been better structured and a little more grounded than the recent experience with metropolitan districts in this state entirely. And that many metropolitan districts have gotten into trouble, and that cities need to do things to protect themselves and their residents against that. We have a case study in the city. So I thought, I mean, above 50 mills is a danger zone to me as a prospective resident of any place like that. To me, 50 is too high. And whether it's a combination of regional or public, to me, is something manufactured. In terms of the result, 50 is the danger zone, and 52 is too high. I guess I should say also, the benefits mentioned are way too small for 52, way too small. Of course, a site like this should have trails and paths around it that are fenced off, because that's the amenity that they're offering to their residents. So that's going to increase the appeal of the development. So of course, they should put those kind of amenities there. The things, where are the city's benefits here? That's what I don't see. I mean, we heard the consultant say, we take the role of the district. We take the role of the district. Who's taking the role of the city? I do not see that we have protected our outcomes here. So what we need is affordable housing by light rail, and so the nation's luxury home builder, is that a good match? I don't see it. Where is our requirement for affordable housing, and where is their obligation to produce it for this kind of consideration that they're asking for? I don't see the benefit to Littleton in what's being proposed. And so I'm going to ask you, stick with the 35 and stick with 40 mills unless much more is being offered by this applicant. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that didn't sign up? Yes, please.
Yes, this is Matthew Duffigan. I, you know, for us to accomplish our plans for transportation and different issues like this, we have to get people out of cars. You know, there is no path forward to stop congestion in the Denver metro area without a portion of the population switching from cars to public transit to things like this. And when my wife and I are moving to Littleton this time, it's the third time we've lived here, so we've been around for about 20 years overall. We were looking at Sterling Ranch, but it was far too far out, and the mill levies were far too high. You know, we were looking at the property taxes, and it was insane. You'd have a mortgage for the rest of your life, even if you paid off your mortgage, you know? And I think, you know, if we have a spot like this, that's in that really isolated area, you know, of Santa Fe, where there's not really anything around it, it's going to be forcing people to own a car, you know? And probably the most prime real estate that we could have that could actually get people to leave the car is by our light rail stations. And so if there's not that commercial space there, or if there's not enough housing, and I agree, you know, about the affordable housing side of this, it doesn't sound like it'll be affordable, you know? And getting people that need affordable housing by public transportation should be a priority of all, you know, cities in the Denver metro area. That's it.
Great, thank you. Anyone else saying none? It is 9:02. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, do we have any more discussing?
Yes, I'd like to address those two speakers. Cars, I get it. We're a half mile from the light rail station. To me, that's a reasonable walk, scooter, whatever you want to call it, to get over to that light rail station. We can't always be right next door to a light rail station, but half mile's not bad, and I might be even far for that. And again, what we're talking about tonight is really just approving a metro district. We're not talking about percentage of homes that need to be affordable. We're not talking about commercial. We're not talking about anything. We're talking about the metro district needing the funds to move this project forward. So I feel very strong about moving this project forward tonight, and I would hope council would agree that this is, again, another good project for Littleton. I hate to see go by the wayside.
Great, thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Counsel, Mayor Protem.
I want to, first of all, thank the Toll Brothers for their application, their presentation. I get feisty about this. I hope nobody takes it personal. I think everybody on this council knows how distrustful I am of metro districts in general. And the reasons are, one, the sort of hyper-complexity unto inscrutability that comes with proposed metro districts. It's incredibly difficult to digest this information. What do we get, 150 pages, 20 pages of, you know, size-five font, number after number after number after number? It's incredibly difficult as a policymaker to tell oneself that, yeah, I've got a handle on this, right? We know that there have been successful metro districts. Of course there have been, right? But when they go wrong, boy, do they go wrong. And it matters to me for whom they go wrong, right? It burdens end users, which is a funny way of saying homeowners, citizens, residents. And, you know, I'm not going to compare, I'm not going to compare this to, I don't know why we're not using the name, but the other one. Sure, they're different, right? But our recent experience has been sobering, and so I think as a result, it's incumbent upon the council to make sure that we're protecting our future residents, right? And so, you know, someone would say, well, Littleton, the other one, this is absurd, Littleton Village happened before our city policy on metro districts. What's being proposed tonight is happening with our policy on metro districts, and that's a fair point, right? But if we're going to move this forward, I would suggest that we keep the applicant strictly within policy. The city attorney is telling us, our intention as a council a year ago, was to cap the repayment period at 35 years. That's what I'm going to, that's what I'm going to say, our intent was as a council. We set that policy. I don't think 40 years is anything but an oversight, right? I would consider this if it were kept in policy, 35 years. And I'm concerned about the fees, very concerned, right? Sure, O and M, how much is that going to cost? I don't know. But replacement or repair of capital, that could be significant. That could be very significant. And the risk falls to homeowners and business owners, right, who are going to invest in this project. I'm very risk averse about metro districts, not knowing the fees. 35 years is where it needs to be for me, and even then, I'm, so as it stands, right, the request is 40 years, no identified fees, 52 mills. I would say no. Certainly, the applicant, I mean, if council votes to not approve, certainly council is, or excuse me, the applicant is free to reapply later on. But, yeah, that's just the way I'm going to sort of balance my concern with metro districts against the application that's in front of us and the policy that we set a year ago that capped this at 35 years. So that's my-
Yep, thank you. Councilmember Milliman, and then me.
So I agree with Patrick. I think that the applicant did a really good job with the presentation based on the information given to them from the city with the service plan and all. And I think Toll Brothers is a very reputable development company. I think we're lucky to have them in our city. This is a very visible property. And I think I would agree with the details of this application, and I support it 100%. And I'm excited to see, hopefully see, what happens on this site. And, yeah, I think that's it. Sorry, short and sweet.
Great, thank you. I'm up, and then we'll go to councilmember Riddicki, and then Driscoll. I just have a couple thoughts on this, is that I'm comfortable with this agreement. And since I've been on council, I'm planning commission, we've seen a few of these things come our way. And with the exception of one, these districts have been successful. And my other concern is that over the years, the council had the reputation in the way out back of being a no development, don't go to Littleton. And council worked hard to change that image and planning commission as well. What I see now is we have a council that doesn't like development. They praise it, but every time something comes forward, they don't like it. I'm okay with this development, so I'm going to vote in favor of. We'll go to councilmember Riddicki, then Driscoll.
I'm also comfortable with this agreement. We'll make one point on the 40 mills. Apparently, prior city council put a cap of 40 mills. Staff made an error in the form to be filled out. I'm sorry. Council put a 35-year limit, and the paperwork said 40 years. So unless the city is willing to pay for all the redo of the 152 pages of analysis and debt services, I say go along with the 40 years. Oops, and in the future, we can correct the form so it reads 35 years.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Driscoll.
Yeah, the applicant has done a phenomenal job of laying out this project or this request. As Mark just pointed out, they're playing with our rules, guys. And it's a shame that, you know, we're going to try to hold somebody to 35 years when they clearly explain why they do a 40-year term, understanding finance, understanding the bond market at all plays, understanding this is still a lot less than the Colorado average of 52 mills. And in addition to, well, I guess that's it. You know, we're holding to our 40 mills plus the 12 for the regional piece. It all plays out just fine. And to the concept of burdening the homeowner, if you don't like it, don't buy. I mean, this will be divulged at closing or, sure, during contract, and if you don't like it, don't buy.
Thank you. We'll go, councilmember Faye, then Grove.
I'd like to toss out a correction, or the implication was that the other metro districts that we have been alluding to was not national builders, and it was, it is national builders. So that didn't work out in that case. I am really concerned that 40 mills has morphed into 52 mills. 52 isn't 40. And reasons were given. I am still not comfortable with that, and I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Grove. And then hopefully, we'll get a motion at that point.
I don't know about previous councils, but I'm not against development. I just want to make sure that we do what we can to protect the citizens, because when it goes wrong, it goes wrong horribly, and we hear about it. And it's very difficult when we didn't look at things from all angles, whatever. I wasn't on council then. I like the fact that they tried to do the replica of the barn coming from an historic preservation. Great idea. I know we're not talking about the site plan, but the site plan looks great. I mean, you know, hopefully, it'll all come to fruition. I would like to see the intent of city council a year ago honored. I may be outvoted, but I'd like to see the 35 years. We talked about that. I'd like to see the 40 mills. We talked about that. And I'd like to see protection for the citizens with fees. And if that could be accommodated, which it may not be because it'll probably be outvoted, that would be my intent, and then I would vote in favor of it.
Great, thank you.
Jerry, can I ask the applicant, does this project move forward with 40 mills?
May I have a moment to confer with my client, sir?
Sure.
So while Ms. Murphy is conferring, you know, at least from what I'm hearing from at least a couple council members, is if there is a motion to approve this, what's being approved is the 40-year debt service term. So if one of the council members was wanting to do 35, we would obviously need to do an amendment to that main motion if the main motion gets seconded, where we would change any references in the service plan that reference 40 years to 35 years. So I trust Mayor Protem will make that motion.
Great.
Amendment?
All right, thank you. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk to my client. This project does not paper on 40 mills. The applicant's respectfully requesting 52 and 40 years, and it's very challenging for us to have a no vote. So to the extent you think you're headed that way, we would respectfully ask for your consideration to continue the public hearing to a later date, and that has to do with meeting a Tabor election requirement. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion.
Yeah, may I move to approve ordinance resolution 27-2021, approving the service plan for Santa Fe Park Metropolitan Districts, numbers one through four.
Second.
We have a motion at second, but I believe that was Milliman. Cool, thank you. Cool, thank you. Counsel, any further discussion? Mayor Proton, do you have something? Your mic's on that.
Oh, no, sorry.
No, okay, cool. All right, well, okay, so what we have is before us, a yes vote is to approve it, a no vote is to deny. So let's get ready here.
I'm sorry, was there gonna be any amendments to do the 35?
I'm moving the meeting, Reed, they didn't stop. Nobody made an amendment.
Very well.
Okay, last chance. Ready to vote? Come on, get my, my finger doesn't make this thing go very well. Am I showing as a vote up there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good. Great.
The vote is five in favor with councilmembers Grove and Fay voting no, the motion carries.
Did you make an error?
I hit the wrong button.
Okay, he's, he's changing, are you changing your vote? You can change your vote.
Yeah, I meant to vote no.
Okay, all right.
Then the vote is four to three with councilmembers Grove, Fay, and Millen voting no. The motion still carries.
Great, thank you.
I would be remiss to not give a huge thanks to your staff. You have wonderful people here. They made this possible. Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Thank you. Counsel, we have a study session immediately following. I'm gonna go right past the comments by manager and attorney. So it is 9:16. We are adjourned, and we're gonna open at, in four minutes, 9:20 for our study session.
Four minutes?
So we gotta go, gotta go. All right, I'm gonna call to order the City of Littleton City Council Study Session for Tuesday, April 17, 2021. The time is 9:23. We have one item on our topic tonight. It's Unified Land Use Code. And I'm gonna turn this over to the city man, we're gonna get a presentation, counsel, then we will be giving direction to staff on how to proceed with that, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm actually gonna turn it right over to Kathleen here and staff, so we can kind of jump right into it. We have a series of policy issues to kind of walk through and hopefully get some direction. Some Brett, general.
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. Kathleen Osher, Community Services Director. I'm joined this evening by Jennifer Henninger, Director of Planning Development, as well as Brett Keast. Kennedy Keeston, however. So we're here this evening, I'm just gonna walk you through a quick, take a quick look at that agenda, we'll get quickly through these pieces. As you know, you've been working on a Unified Land Use Code for the last two years. We've gotten a lot of input from you throughout that process, as well as community input. And this evening, we have a series of slides that we're gonna go through, and oddly enough, we have eight questions for you, and they are sort of prioritized based on how they're outlining these slides. So we're gonna go through this process and hope to get direction from you on these paper mainly policy questions that we have for you. And then again, we are looking to release the red line draft of the Unified Land Use Code on Thursday. That'll be a piece of a zoning map that now matches the Unified Land Use Code. And then we will be back with you next Tuesday, because you can't get enough, right? So we will be back on Tuesday to run through that red line draft with you, as well as the zoning map, and hopefully then begin to solidify this Unified Land Use Code, its final draft and, and final mail-in C, so that we begin that adoption cycle starting in September.
And I've also asked the city manager to stop when he's looking for direction on a number of items, to make sure we don't just keep going.
So I, do you wanna just kind of give you a quick overview of the public review and comment of the draft? This will be part of your packet next week for the 24th of August. So, you know, we did a video series, open Littleton surveys, we use that, that tool that the city has, social media campaigns. We also combined that with posters and yard signs to try and really boost and enhance our opportunity to get as much feedback as possible. We also had 22 locations with paper surveys to help guide people through the Unified Land Use Code, made materials available in, in English and Spanish. As a result of all of those efforts, this is an updated number from your original packet, so 662 comments were received in N-code. We also have ton, 10 comment letters, as well as five email comments. Again, we'll consolidate all of those, staff has been working through those and, and working together with Kennedy Keast to try and incorporate those when they have merit. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Brett. We're gonna begin first with housing and affordability. We just have some general information on the slide, but we do have one outstanding policy question for you.
And I will note that that's 662 public comments. With staff, we have almost 2,000. So there has been quite a major, major, major effort.
More bang for your bucks.
With staff. Nonetheless, it's been deeply vetted. So relative to housing, this is a, a big topic relative to affordability. We've been talking about it for quite a long time, and I think it's been everybody's understanding that we're gonna basically set the stage and do as much as we can do right now within the confines of the ULUC and the districts and the housing types and so forth, with a subsequent process to really dig in deeper to affordability and all the things that come along with that. I listed out on the right-hand side, just, and kind of a quick research, just some of the different things that other communities around Colorado are doing with mandating certain percentages of affordable units. We're not addressing that right now. That takes kind of a separate effort and more, more involved conversation. But just to familiarize you, again, I think concerning these things, we have added housing to what used to be your rural districts, longer corridors, which is now your corridor mixed. So that opens up a lot of additional acreage that can be available for residential housing. I mean, some of those can be affordable with the proper structure put in place. We have combined three of your multi-family districts, single multi-family districts, so that just streamlines, reduces, makes the map simpler, reduces steps to rezone to get different unit types. We've broadened the housing types. We've added in a cottage court. We can have small, single-family units kind of organized around an open space. You can have shared garages and things of that nature. A multiplex, which is basically three and four, tiny homes, so just a lot of, basically expanding to different types of housing. We've addressed ADUs, obviously. We resolved that last time I was here, continuing conversations about STRs. So there's been a lot of things that have been done in this ordinance to basically expand the opportunities for housing, the different types of housing, so that we can create opportunities for, whether it's smaller housing, or whether it's multi-family housing, or attached housing, whatever it might be, that can help us meet this one bit of a need. Some of these are really focused on resiliency and maintaining the stability and integrity of neighborhoods, so they continue to be of, of good value and reinvested in. So that's what has happened thus far in, in this section of the, well, across multiple sections of the ULUC. The one question that we have is relative, we've had conversation about duplex conversions. We have put standards in the code that would allow a single-family home to convert to a duplex. However, we have not mapped it. We have not specified where that may happen. I think you have a couple of alternatives. You could choose to make that permitted in certain districts outright, or you could choose to make it conditional, and therefore it would come through public hearing and come back through council. If you allow the market to dictate and people to come forward and say, we're interested in doing this, we could set out in the code that, yes, that can be done in this district, permitted outright, or permitted subject to standards, or we can say that would require conditional use. So that's the question that we have before you tonight. We've got areas of town where, you know, this has already happened, where you have single-family and duplex and some triplex mixed in. So I think it's a, a matter of, you know, do you see this as being appropriate, given the standards? We've got a lot of standards in there to make sure that it doesn't look like a duplex, has one driveway, it has one door on the front, another door is on the back, it has one address, it doesn't have mailboxes hanging off the front. So from the naked eye driving by, there would really be nothing that would suggest that this is duplex, albeit it's, you know, that many people living there. Of course, that many people could live there in a single-family home, too. But that's the question that's before you. Is there a district, either small lot residential district or medium lot residential district, where you think that could be permitted according to the standards? Or do you think it should become a conditional use or just outright prohibited?
And I think Planning Commission has done some work on this, so there may be a recommendation to, but we're happy to take your questions.
I'm okay with that. I think you forget about the legal side of it, you know? Somebody's gonna look at a building, and they're gonna come in and say, I'm buying this as a duplex, and now I want to break it up into two single families. So they gotta go through the title, the party wall agreements, there's all sorts of things they have to do, legal descriptions to separate those, that unit. So I think we're getting way ahead of ourselves, but I'm, I'm.
You're talking on the mortgage side.
Well, yeah, I'm talking about trying to get that loan funded. You know, trying to, you gotta separate it. All we're talking about is what the city would allow. So there's all the other pieces behind it. So there's a lot of work for somebody to separate the building.
To begin with.
To begin with, they, they would come to us once they got the separation, maybe coincide.
Sorry, did I misunderstand? I thought we were talking about converting it to a duplex, not from a duplex.
Converting from a single-family to a duplex.
Right.
Same thing, it could go either way.
Have a duplex that looks like a single-family home.
So in terms of what Planning Commission, this conversation that we had, we heard, you know, put the option out there and maybe have it for very specific areas of the city, allow duplex and triplex in multi-family and corridor mixed-use zone districts with a conditional use permit in neighborhoods. We need to outline the process of what that duplex conversion would look like, what they need to go through, a plat, a lot split, a condominium. It's gonna be under joint ownership or dual ownership. Other side, it's another tool in the toolbox to create housing options, the duplex conversion. Need to work on the criteria of how, how it would work. Our North Littleton neighborhood has a lot of examples of duplexes and triplexes intermixed with single-family homes. Another suggestion was to allow it in the, in the future land use map, we have the mixed character core, so that was an area to allow for that. Crestline and Detoura actually has some examples of duplexes that look like single-family homes. Exterior design is key in doing the duplex conversion, that was one of the comments. Overall, Planning Commission was in support of allowing duplex conversions in multiple areas of the city, but just the more criteria associated with it.
And we have to give direction on this item, so we have about seven more items to go after this, so where are you on this, Kelly?
I totally support it.
Looking for a yes or no?
Corridors, yes. Neighborhoods, either not permitted or conditional.
So you're okay with moving forward, it sounds like?
Yeah, as long as we, based on them.
Yeah, so it, it is limited, it, what you have it down, it's not just everywhere, it's, I think, what I just heard.
Right, that's what we're asking.
Yeah, that's what we're asking. So where to fill that out in the use matrix, and then it would indicate where it could be in the city on the zoning.
I think, maybe I need to rephrase the question then. So the question needs to be, allow it under a conditional use, Kelly?
It sounds like what Pam's proposing is, if you can do that in the use in the neighborhoods.
I think Kelly's, are you for that as well?
Well, I have a question.
Sure.
Can you, can you explain to me the definition of what a neighborhood is? Is the neighborhood just physical houses? Or is a neighborhood the people that live in those houses? And the people that create that community, that neighborhood? So to me, I feel like we're giving more. You know, sometimes in this language, we're giving more support or safety nets to the actual houses and not to the homeowners. Does that make sense?
If I understand where you're going with that, relative to characters. As I've explained before, character as it relates to zoning is more related to, you know, the physical dimensions and the form of neighborhoods. So, you know, the houses, the boxes that are houses are the same. Whether there's one person living in there or 10 people living in there. The outward appearance, you know, is doesn't change. There's still the same spacing between houses, there's still the front yard setbacks. So the character and the form of that neighborhood stays the same irregardless of whether it's rented or whether it's owned. So it's kind of like saying a parking lot would change in character if you have Fords parked there rather than Chevys. The parking lot's the same. It's just a difference in car. So it's kind of the same thing in neighborhoods. So when we talk about character, we're talking about the physical, the dimensional standards and the. You know, the physical environment and the feel of that neighborhood.
Okay. Well, with that, Kelly, so I, where are you? We need to give direction.
I mean, I support it because we need housing of all sorts, so I support it everywhere. I don't think that we should continually put restrictions.
Corridors, yes, no problem. And neighborhoods, I'd like to go not permitted, but I'm, I'm fine with conditional.
Kelly, are you saying that you permitted in neighborhoods or conditional?
Permitted.
Okay.
I've already seen a number of them in the city and they're lovely. They're actually quite lovely and I think they contribute to the overall aesthetic of, you know, an aging neighborhood. So.
And I think for the purposes of this conversation. When we, when we talk about neighborhoods, we talk about zoning districts.
Okay.
Just for the categorization process.
So assuming the design standards are there, so the duplexes are indistinguishable aesthetically from a single family house. I don't care where in the city you put it, we need housing. So I'm gonna go ahead.
Put them.
Corridors later.
Okay.
Okay, good.
I'm with Pam.
Yeah, me too.
Yep.
No. No in the acreage, no in large lot residential, no in medium lot residential, yes in multi-family residential. Mixed use corridor, mixed use and then the corridors, yes. Point clarification, I think conditional uses go only to Planning Commission. They do not go to council, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. You mentioned that it goes to council, it does not.
Yeah.
So.
What about the small lot residential?
Oh, small lot, yeah, I'd say yes.
Yes, okay.
And I'm a yes. So it sounds like we're all, Mark's, are you, are you yes with those criteria, right?
I say that again.
With that criteria you just gave, it sounds like we're all in favor of moving it forward.
Wait a second. Keith, no in the neighborhoods too.
No, quite, quite a bit of the.
Well, can't they just put down Mark has a no and the rest I think are okay with moving forward or something?
No.
Is that where, where are we at on this thing?
That's not what.
What I'm hearing is corridor mixed, everybody's in favor of that.
Yes.
Yes. And multi-family, sounds like people are okay with that.
Yep.
Yes.
Small lot residential, people are okay with that. The question would be conditional permitted in the mix or the large.
Why are you saying small lot? It's okay. I would say no residential, all residential except for one type of family should be conditional.
I think you can make a conditional and small lot, okay.
Unconditional.
I just wanted, I don't want it to be allowable use or conditional use in the acreage, large lot and medium lot. We keep talking about the integrity and stability of neighborhoods. To me, that interrupts the integrity of the neighborhoods.
Aren't we consolidating some of this? Are we consolidating some of the neighborhoods?
Yes.
Acreage.
I'll show you that coming up on this slide.
Well, that will impact what he's saying.
No, the MLR, it wouldn't be allowed in the MLR, which is your R3 today. And it would be conditional in SLR.
A conditional in SLR, conditional MLR and conditional in LLR.
Can word this for me so that all of us can understand, to be clear, what we're agreeing to and not agreeing to.
I think the issue is the neighborhoods. The corridors were mine, everybody's safe.
Conditional in SLR, correct, small lots?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you want a conditional in medium lot residential, which is R3?
I'm a no.
You're a no.
What do you want it, permitted or?
Not permitted at all.
Okay, so he's saying no.
So only SLR. So if CM we're all agreement on.
Yep.
Condition, of course.
And if you're not agreeing, say so.
I think that the difference aesthetically, the difference in terms of character between small lot residential and lot residential is very minimal. It doesn't make sense to me to make it conditional in SLR, but not ban it. I just don't think we're getting to the heart of the matter, those distinctions that we're making.
That sound like we need to go around.
Kelly, did you have comment?
I'm going to pivot just a little bit to try to move the conversation back to population numbers within the city of Littleton. We got our census numbers back, correct? And.
Excuse me, preliminary.
Preliminary. And I believe we're possibly negative, is that right?
Negative, no, we grew.
The number is 46,000, which I think surprised some of us because we're expecting more.
Yes.
So the preliminary number is about 46, if I remember.
It is, but we started 10 years ago at around 40.
So if any, you look at how, you know, how much other cities have grown, City of Littleton is not growing as fast. And my concern is, again, when we're putting restrictions on adding more housing in the city, we are putting a restriction on the number of people moving into the city. And if that's what people want to do, that's fine. But what our citizens, I think they need to understand is that means higher property taxes. Because that means, it does, because that means less people moving into the city, less numbers to support the services. So I don't think, you know, in the comprehensive plan, people said, we don't want any growth. I don't think that's what they said. I think they want more walkable, bikeable, whatever, you know, city, community. And I think, again, we're putting restrictions and limiting growth within the city. And I think that's going to be detrimental in the long run. We could turn into another Cherry Hills Village.
And frankly, I'm okay with keeping a cap one. But I think we grew by about 6,000 or 7,000, we're not sure what the final number is. But that's about how many units we earned, we installed over the past 10 years. So as Scott says, build it and they will come. That's how it's true. If we build, you know, 20,000 more units, probably 20 more thousand people will come to Littleton. That concerns me. That, that changes the city of Littleton, changes our water uses, changes a lot of things. I'm okay with keeping our numbers under control and getting middle, we need the middle income housing is what we really need.
But this is middle income housing.
That's what I'm looking for.
These duplexes.
Looking for.
I think what we're down to is just MLR.
I think it is.
Permitted or conditional.
I think that's one we got to go around the room here and just reaffirm where is the council at on that one.
I'm sorry, Brett, I'm being dense. Can you summarize the rest of where council is?
Yeah, so corridor mixed, it would be permitted by rights.
Yeah.
Multi-family be permitted by rights. SLR, it would be permitted by conditional use. The question is MLR. And I'll throw one more thing out there at neighborhood or the neighborhood commercial, which has a mix of residential and commercial in some of the areas along those are boulevards. Seems like that would be an area where it could accommodate since it's residential and commercial. So I would ask for neighborhood commercial, yay or conditional, and then MLR, yay or conditional.
And we hear no take acreage.
Mark, let's just take one at a time, go around the room. Okay, so the question on the table is for mixed, and I'm in favor, then MLR.
MLR.
Medium lot.
Medium lot.
Yeah, Mark?
Medium lot residential? No, period.
Okay. Carol?
No.
Scott?
Conditional, just because I don't want us to be creating these kinds of differences between SLR and MLR. I think it creates an odd higher on Kansas City. Oh, and what was the other one?
Pam said no?
She said I have a yes on the.
Not yet, you have to wait.
Yeah, hang on that, Scott.
I think with our design guidelines, yeah, medium.
Okay, but it sounds like the majority was against. Okay?
Correct.
All right. What's the next question? Scott has one he's dying to answer.
Neighborhood commercial.
We're gonna start, Pam? Yes. I'll go with conditional.
Permitted, yes.
Conditional.
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 Got it, some additional digits. Works.
Pull back real quick on my original comment. So if somebody's looking to convert their single family into a duplex, you know, that doesn't require anything, I mean, yeah, I mean, if anyone's knocking on the door and say, hey, this should be a single family. They're gonna have to probably answer to the servicer, but I doubt that.
Next topic is parking, we have two questions on this.
Did you get your small lot?
Yes, the answer was no.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, small lot was conditional, MLR was no. So we have minimum parking standards. These have been for each of the uses that are in the use matrix and they've been tested against the institute of transportation in there is their parking ratios. And as you know, just like the conversations we had from downtown, we have lots of caveats in there for reduced parking. Outside of downtown, we have adaptive reuse. So if somebody's trying to reuse a building, it would either be the existing, the lesser of the existing parking or the required parking. So if they inherit and they can't meet the parking, they could use the parking that they have as means to help them facilitate redevelopment and reinvestment and use of that property. Then we have transit shifts. So within a quarter mile, there's a 15% reduction in parking within a quarter mile of a transit stop. A 25% reduction within a quarter mile of a light rail station in the commercial mixed district and mineral station. So really encouraging walking, bicycling, transit usage. And then we have all the shared parking and special parking studies. There's also a 15% reduction allowed for development that employs sustainable measures. But you cannot stack these, so you can't get a 25% plus 15%. You get one or the other, as that's spelled out in there. So the question that we have on parking is, should the ULC provide only parking minimums as opposed to maximums? Or have no parking requirements at all? Which was a topic that the Planning Commission brought.
Do you want to share their feedback, Jen?
The Planning Commission's feedback on parking was.
And if you could speak up loud, because I keep hearing people tell me they don't hear you.
Sorry. So we actually had a number of members of Planning Commission that said, don't have any parking requirements at all. So that was a recommendation.
For what? For anything?
Anything. Just don't have parking requirements.
Why?
It goes to, it speaks to affordability in some cases, sustainability in some cases. Pushes the behavior we're trying to get to. At the cost, it's not environmentally friendly. Those are some of, some of the things that they did. They talk about if we charged for parking, there wouldn't be a parking issue. Building parking structures collaboratively would take care of a lot of the parking, perceived parking. Pushing parking specifically when it came to downtown. Having exterior parking areas like parking in the Littleton city center promoting that. Parking truly would be regulated by developers. They're not going to build any more parking than they need. Let's see. Talk of reducing parking within a half mile of transit, not just a quarter mile. I think that 1320 is a quarter mile.
Okay.
So maybe it's adjusted within one mile of a light rail station in particular to reduce parking. They do agree with keeping reduced parking incentives for proximity to transit and also offering bike facilities. Also talked about having parking exempt districts. For example, for. Not have parking requirements to, is to incentivize businesses to locate there when they don't have to meet parking requirements.
So the question is min, max?
Right now, we include minimum parking ratios for each use that's listed in the, in the code. You heard what the Planning Commission recommendations are. Our, our question was, should we leave it as it's written now? Would we, should we put in parking maximums? So in other words, even if a national big box comes in and says, we're going to put in six spaces per thousand. The city would say, no, you're only allowed to put in four per thousand or three and a half per thousand. The advantage to that would be, you notice the amount of parking that's available year round that's not used. Less runoff, less snow storage, more green. You know, there's just a whole slew of environmental benefits to that, heat island effect, so forth.
I guess it'll be more store.
It, it, it could be, yes, you could have more leasable square footage.
And that's what we're talking minimal.
That's if you put in a maximum.
Maximum.
Then you know that the amount of a site is not going to increase over that. So the remaining of the site is either your greenscape or your building or something.
So that's the question.
There's nationally, there's a lot of communities that have moved in the direction of maximum. There's only a couple of places that have just done away with parking. Detroit's probably the biggest of them. That's obviously looking to reinvest and get redevelopment. And so they've just done away with, with parking. And then there's still, I would say the vast majority of all communities across the country are still based on minimal.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd say the vast majority of communities are still basic minimal, but many communities are moving towards maximums.
Okay, cool. So that's the question on the table right now.
That's the question.
Yep.
Leave it or go to maximums or include maximums?
I'm liking max, I'm liking max.
Is it minimum, max, no?
Minimum or?
Those were choices, minimum, max or no?
Well, the Planning Commission brought up no parking at all.
Okay.
So I guess that's on the table.
So there's three things.
Unanimous or like one or two members of Planning Commission?
I don't think they ever thought it. And a lot of cities are going that way, right?
Yeah, Castle Rock actually went that way and now they have, have gone back on that. But eliminating the parking requirements actually.
I'm okay with max, I'm okay with max. Let's go around the table here and get her done.
Let's start with Mark this time.
We'll start with Mark.
I think there should be the minimum standards. You clarified it a little bit, I kept thinking, okay, 25%, then add 15, add another 25 and eventually you got, you know, no parking at all, but you're saying you can't stack them.
You can't stack them.
Great, okay, so I'm for the minimums in the code and perhaps a maximum for the big box, let's say. I wouldn't put a maximum on everything, it's just too cumbersome. Just big boxes or whatever, fake a certain size of a development.
Can you say, Patrick?
I like Mark's way of thinking, I'll agree with Mark.
Yep.
Minimum and maximum.
Yep, I, I, that's, that's where I am too. Scott?
Sorry, what do we mean by that?
Mark just said.
Adding maximum parking ratios so they cannot exceed whatever maximum is set. And I think what Mark has clarified is mainly limiting that to what we call large scale developments in the, in the code. So over 100,000 per feet, major shopping centers, big boxes, things of that nature.
Maximum.
Really?
Minimum and maximum.
Yep.
I'd like to refer back to our citizen that came up tonight and shared with us again the importance of creating a more walkable community, a more livable, walkable community. So I'm going to go with Planning Commission's recommendation to say no parking requirements.
So it sounds like majority of council's direction is the min, max.
Min, max. Okay. We had that drafted at one point, so it's can be easily turned back on. The last question on this.
Wait, wait, it's got something.
I'm sorry, just real quick for whatever records being made, I just want to revise and say. I don't have an opinion, right? This feels like a major policy decision. I feel unprepared to offer direction and I'm going to say that I need more information. unprepared to offer direction, and I'm going to say that I need more information and more time.
Still have direction.
Last point on parking is just if you concur with the reduced parking within a quarter mile, fixed, i.e. permanent transit bus, future BRT, or light rail stations. Quarter mile is what all the TUD documentation around the country typically uses, planning commission was saying should stretch it to a half mile.
What, what I'm not clear about is, let's say somebody drives in from five miles away and needs to park in order to use the public, the transit, and, and then, sounds like we're saying we're going to reduce the amount of parking that's available there, is that right?
So if a business comes in and develops, or I guess even an apartment complex or mixed use, whatever that is, and they're within a quarter mile of improvement, that they could reduce the parking that they build when they build it.
So you're not talking about transit parking?
Yeah, RTD and stuff would still probably provide there.
Thank you.
We used to be a half mile, didn't we? Seems like we had a requirement, remember that Mark, we had a tiz at one time?
We had tiz, yeah.
A tiz, it was like a half mile.
I'm good with that quarter mile, I think it makes all the sense to Kelly's point.
I'm okay with quarter mile.
Okay, quarter mile.
Patrick?
Yeah.
You said Mark started.
Mark?
Over there.
Well, the curmudgeon to me says, RTD is miniscule in ridership and will continue to be, I'll go along with it.
I, I defer, again, to planning commission, I say half mile. Good reasons for it.
Was it half or a quarter?
Quarter, that's the question.
A quarter. I'm, I'm, I'm against it all, because I don't think we're New York or DC, and I think RTD is not being used, and I think light rail, people, it just goes downtown, and I just don't think it applies to our city, so I'm against it also with the least possible.
I'd change my vote and go with her.
So your response is what?
No, no.
No reduction?
No reduction.
That's okay, Scott?
Same thing I said earlier.
Scott, you don't have enough info?
I don't.
Right, well?
We're just trying to get some language put together, right, just trying to get some consensus among the council as to, yeah, I mean, this, this will come out in the second draft, right? And then we're, the public can weigh in on it, we can all weigh in on it.
No, I, I, I think this is, you know, this is the wave that we are going to not have parking for the people that live there, and expect them to fight with the parking on the street, and...
We're just trying to get some clarity, so we can have something to start off with, some, at least some conversation.
No, we're putting this in the code.
This is what we, this is what we have right now.
What's in the code right now is that there's a quarter mile, there's reductions at a quarter mile for, as spelled out on the slide.
Put it in code, but it's going to be up for draft, and people are going to comment on it, right?
So how many people, just so I have clarity, were saying they were okay with a quarter mile?
Quarter. So it looks like there's two and a half.
We're saying no reductions.
No reductions?
Yeah. Two.
Two, we're not going to have a consensus.
On the low and half mile.
Three and a half.
So where are we?
Anthony and I just had a comment here. I think what is being suggested for a quarter mile is, I think Brett made the comment, is standard for a lot of RTDs similar to these, is that fair to say? That's mine.
Most of the research and documentation on TUDs is quarter mile is the, is the radius.
I would suggest that we not look at the current service level of RTD, it just, it's irrelevant at the moment. Yes, over time, we're going to want to make them be perhaps a service provider that meets our needs, but I think it'll be, this is one of those chicken and egg kind of issues, I think that it's, we're trying to set up a code so that we can encourage the kind of behavior we hope to have, and if you don't have the partnership with RTD, that that needs to rise to a higher level to try to go get it. And I think BRT is the opportunity that I think is, for our city, is real, and so I would suggest the council try to, since there's some indecision here, I think the quarter mile to me, in my opinion, for whatever it's worth, I don't vote.
Why is that the standard? What kinds of silly things are popular in the standard?
Well, a quarter mile is considered walkable, you can do it, and, you know, it's a five-minute walk, and people are comfortable walking five minutes, so that's the quarter mile.
There's been studies on propensity of ridership based upon different walking distances and things like that through, through research, so most, okay, most of the codes you see.
We're at 10 o'clock, so council has to make a decision to continue, how much more do we think we have to get through this blistering rate?
We've got two questions.
This is our third.
And we have eight, right?
So I'll go, I think, pretty quick.
We're doing 15 minutes?
I'm, I'm okay with Stan, I'm okay with Stan.
We sat for 15 minutes.
Let's, let's give ourselves till 10:30.
I like the idea of raising our hands, instead of going into explaining.
Okay, yeah, explaining is killing us, so let's, council, are we okay with 10:30 first of all? Okay, we're going with 10:30, sorry, go ahead.
Reductions within a quarter mile.
Quarter mile.
Everyone?
Okay. I'm just going to go straight to the questions on design standards.
Before I agree to say until 10:30, I would like...
You already did, sorry.
I didn't.
You did. We won, we won.
Could, could we agree, like, like Pat suggested, that we raise our hands instead of discussing everything?
I think we just did, but where you been, you keep, you're in and out, in and out.
I, I didn't vote either way.
Okay, so, but, did you get your answer on the, was it a quarter mile, the council on, let's make sure council understands then.
Sorry, I guess I have a point of order.
All right.
Or study session, can we do that? The attorneys take an order.
All right, thanks. You can't, as a council, vote for me to just raise my hand and not express an opinion.
I'm not voting, we're giving direction.
We're saying.
We've got to give direction, that's the point.
Sure, but we're in study session, right?
Yep.
We've voted before, remember the tax issue? We voted for that.
There's technically, technically, nothing that says you can't vote in a study session, but...
That's not what I'm saying.
You're saying discussion.
Saying we're being awfully casual about saying, let's not have discussion about major policy issues, let's just raise our hand because of the late hour, if that's where we're at, we need to do this later on.
Yeah.
Scott a point.
I'm okay with quarter.
And then if you're desperate to say something, then say something.
I agree.
I don't think desperation is a standard for me to express my opinion, that's what study session is for, and these are major policy decisions. Better question maybe is, should we just come back to this?
Do we have another time, we can add this to the agenda? We have a Thursday meeting coming up, can we add it to that one?
No. You know, I think you're going to have, we, we can, I mean, we certainly can do that.
Scott brings up a point, we shouldn't be rushing this, this is too important.
Right, if you're not comfortable with your answer, then don't, don't give an answer.
Well, I don't want to feel pressure from everybody else in the room that I can't speak or...
You're feeling pressure, that's you, I'm, I'm okay with giving answers, I'm not pressured by anybody.
May I go through the questions, and if you're able to answer them, great, if you can't, we'll put them off till next week.
Okay.
Let's do that, but then the issue is, is discussion, is people are going to want to discuss.
Let's go for it.
I'm going to filibuster, that's what we're about to do.
There's three questions on design standards.
We have one member that doesn't want to do it, that's fine.
Three questions on design standards, we know that the design standards were downtown, been adopted, many of those same design standards have been extended to the corridor mixed district, the business commercial district, industrial district to a lesser extent, the neighborhood commercial district. Building materials, sorry, what, neighborhood commercial? Building materials, certain types of materials, certain percentages on street-facing facades, some articulation, make sure they're not building square box, square boxes with some jutouts and some, you know, horizontal and vertical articulation. And as we move towards the industrial district, it's really just those that are within 300 feet of a, a commercial corridor or a suburban connector, just basically the...
Type of street.
Yeah, type of street, just within 300 feet, so if you're back off the street, there's lesser standards. So the question is, is that going too far? Are we, are we adding design standards in places that we shouldn't be, or are we making design standards too restrictive? Again, corridor mixed is your highest, highest traveled corridors, neighborhood commercial, Littleton and a few other places, and then you have your business areas along Mineral, Mineral Broadway primarily, a little bit, some to the north.
I, I'm not sure what you're asking.
It, it's what's in there now, though.
It's what's in there now.
Yeah.
The alternative would be that we don't require any of that stuff, and we just look solely at where the building is placed on the lot and landscaping, and not get into actual building, the form of the building, the shape of the building, or the materials or percentage of materials on those street-facing facades.
Can I just ask why staff wants to hear from council on that? I mean, we've been emphasizing design standards throughout, I mean, there's never been any discussion about removing design standards, like not articulating on a, on a, on a long building.
I think just calling, calling the question, honestly, and all the questions we've got from the development community, they didn't really question this, they had a lot of good comments, but I think it was just raising the question of, from an expense standpoint, and, you know, to allow development to continue, are we going too far in terms of design standards? The design standards aren't out of the norm with what most communities would do.
What did planning commission say?
We did not get to that question, so we will be discussing that on Thursday. There were some comments in actual end code of overreach on our part of dictating what type of roof materials, what type of building materials the developers could use.
There's a palette of different materials, there's primary materials, and then there's
secondary.
Secondary materials, and it says, certain percentage of this facade needs to be primary, the rest can be secondary.
We can discuss that separately, though.
If you choose.
Now, thank you.
Do limiting standards as they're written.
Greenscaping.
Let's make sure council understands what we're talking about.
Okay, so we're saying to leave the design standards that are in the code right now.
I'm just raising my hand, you've got to interpret what I mean, just go for it, hands up.
Not a strong feeling to reduce or... So you're going to look at that if you think otherwise. The other question is on greenscaping, we require street trees, you know, one tree per X amount of foot, we require some foundation planting, so we're not pouring parking lots right up to the foundation, leaving some green for certain portions of frontages, and then parking lot, perimeter landscaping, screening, and then interior, and then we have buffer yards. One, I think, point of confusion is the open space requirements, these are all inclusive, they're not mutually exclusive one another, so if there's a certain percentage that's supposed to be green, that can be used for your buffer, that can be used for your street trees, that can be used for your landscaping, so they're not separate from one another. I think the concern was that we're requiring so much greenscape, and there's not enough room for the building left. We've, we've put that into our model, we've calibrated the FARs and stuff based upon meeting the parking requirements and meeting these landscape requirements. So the question that's just before you is, do we leave the greenscaping requirements that are in the code now?
How do they compare to what we have now? We have standards for interior landscaping, exterior.
I think we left the interior the same, I believe, at 5%.
Yeah.
I think where there's an increase maybe would be the perimeter screening along parking lots that are along right of way, in the commercial mix, we're saying 100% of that link has to be have some type of shrubbery or berm or something of that nature, so I think we've ratcheted that up a little bit. Buffer yards is obviously a new thing for those sensitive edges between districts and between different intensities to help soften that.
So the question comes down to the minimum or...
Leave it the way it is or draw them back, reduce them.
I say leave it, leave it as it is, works for me. Leave it as it is, as what's in there now, you're talking.
Preserve canopy coverage, and I've heard that all through this process. Last question, we talked about in terms of building heights, setting a 14-foot first floor, and each floor above that being 11-foot, that provides, well, it's 10-foot 8 is what I heard, that provides for a nine-foot ceiling height. How this affects us is, the total building heights will just calculate 14 plus 11 for however many stories that go up, so I just have to go through the code and just make those match up. So I did that on commercial mixed, and, you know, you might get...
Forty-seven and 51.
Forty-seven feet, 51 feet, something like that, which reflects that 14-foot first floor, 11-foot for the floors above. We've got caps, obviously, on the number of stories. The question that came to us was, somebody said, get rid of the feet and just allow stories, but if they do that, we could have very tall buildings and three stories. So we did agree that that would be, should be a change, but if we do this, I'll just go back through downtown, we'll have to make a few adjustments there, we're talking about a handful, you know, three, four feet in most cases.
But we're still kept at 55 feet, right? Or is it 60?
Forty-seven. In the downtown, we, we base it on 14-foot plus 10-foot, and now we're saying 14-foot plus 11-foot to give a nine-foot ceiling, so we're going up like three, four feet.
Why do we have to go up, why do we have to have more and more height?
I think it's for typical, you know, upper-story residential, they want nine-foot ceilings, and so therefore they need 10-foot 8 to account for...
Well, you had, you had floor to floor, that was preposterous, I mean, you get done with the, the floor structure, and plus a cavity for mechanical, you're looking at a, like, 7.6 ceiling or something like that.
I totally disagree, it's floor creep.
Floor creep, I like that.
It's, it's like project creep, let's add three feet here and four feet, now we're at 55 feet, that's not three stories, that's like five and a half stories, really.
What, what I heard max is for downtown.
Yeah, but it's at 55 feet.
It would be 58 feet if it...
No, no, we said, we said 55 feet, we need to keep it there, and, and all the projects that they, the, what are it, 25 projects that penciled at, at 30 feet did just fine.
Are you talking about citywide or downtown?
Well, everywhere, I'm talking about downtown, downtown, citywide, who cares? Oh, that's fine.
So we believe downtown, the way it is, adopted, not change that?
Not change those.
Okay, and then just do it in the corridor mix?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
What's, what's the question in one sentence?
Yeah.
Framed as a yes or no? What are we, what are we...
Can we write the code to say 14-foot first floor, 11-foot, each of the next floors up to whatever height that's required for maximize, maximum height limit, but it be in the corridor mix, not downtown, leave downtown?
Only in corridor mix.
So we're talking about a, a four-story building would be 33 plus 14, so 47 feet is what we would put it in the corridor mix.
My preference is, as long as it's, we leave downtown the way it is, I'm fine.
Yeah, I like that, leave downtown alone, and the rest is, it works for me.
You bet.
Thanks Paul.
It's a capping height.
It's a practice.
Yeah, we still have a gap of...
I think we go up to seven, a lot, provided that it's, you know, we've got a plane in there if it's next to a neighborhood or something like that, that they'd have to step it back.
So the corridor is used 14-foot for a story, 11-foot for every other story?
Yes.
Anybody have an issue with that?
But not downtown, okay, cool.
Was that a raising the hand or a question?
No, what she said.
Okay.
Two questions left.
Okay.
Sustainability, right now it's incentive-based, right? If you do XYZ in designing your building and employ these different sustainability methods that you can earn, did you change it already? Yeah, you can earn credits, you can earn density, you can earn additional floor, you might be able to earn additional story outside of downtown. Some people said some of these things they think should be required, not as an incentive, to, to move the needle further towards more sustainability. So we've got a lot of stuff in here already, unlike water-wise landscaping, we're not saying mandating that you must have zero scape, but there's a lot of stuff in there that's minimizing high water use, plant types, edible landscaping, we put stuff in there about that, that we heard from Tri-County and some council members, we've got provisions in here for bicycle facilities, so I think we've done a lot, but it's just if you want to take some next steps. So I don't know that you're prepared to answer that, but what I would say is to look at the sustainability provisions and look at all the different things, and if some of those you think should be required of all projects, rather than being eligible for a bonus, then let's talk about them next Tuesday, can we do that? Can we do that?
Where, where in the code do we look up that?
So you have, you know, environmental...
Oh, okay, you'll, you'll give us some less word.
Red line version.
Okay.
I like that view. Treat it as an incentive. I don't think every project can be treated exactly the same and make it mandatory. I think too, too much overreach.
That's why you're creeping into, I see that in other areas of the, you're creeping into the building code. I think, stay out of it. Building codes, energy codes are getting more restrictive every day. So whether we say anything or not, the building codes, the uniform building code, or the, I'm sorry, international building code.
I've seen, and we will be moving to the, and we will be asking council to do it to the 2021.
Yes, you want?
Yeah.
And 2024 will be more restrictive than what's on the, what will be in 2021.
So the question is whether it's incentive or...
Noodles and noodles and noodles of things that people can do on projects and they can earn partial credits. They'd have to do a lot to get full credits.
I'm all for incentives, man, I'm all for incentives.
Credits to do what?
Many things.
So those will be available on some designs.
Okay, but if I put it as zero scape, what do I get?
It spells it out as...
Cheaper water bill. Yeah, I mean, I'm just like, what do I get?
Look at section 10, 1, 3.4. 10, 1, 3.4. Sustainable building design.
Got two minutes to figure it out.
No pressure. You have the approximate page number under the old code?
Well, I'm about, in the least, most recent, I'm about 99, 100, so you should...
Okay, I'm just kidding.
Let me move on to the last question in the interest of time. Well, we'll come back to that. Are you ready to address that question?
I'm ready to address it, I'm ready to address it. Anybody else?
I just want to know what I get.
Let's just...
When I do this stuff.
So go ahead and put the question.
No touch of you.
Leave the code as it's written today.
I'm trying to figure out what I get.
Which is incentivizing, uh, green building, uh, practices? Or are there some of those that we should mandate as, on all projects, they should have to do XYZ?
I'm incentive.
Incentive.
I think you brought up a good point, that the International Building Code is moving in the direction of...
I'll say incentive is with some caveat in that some, like adding extra story, no. So I, I think some of the carrots have gone too far.
Well, you have to, you have to earn a lot of, you have to do a lot of things in order to earn that.
But I don't like that story, extra story, when we start setting like that.
It's too big a carrot.
Yeah.
We could talk about the individual carrots and delete one or two.
Some of them might be celery.
There you go, okay.
So are we still going around?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Scott.
Jeez, I mean, in the last two weeks, what news have I read? Wildfires, the IPCC report came out, small town in Utah has put a moratorium on development because they don't have the water. And on and on, you know, I think, um, at some point, governments at all level are going to have to take some serious action, uh, to make sure they're doing everything possible to make sustainability a reality. But I'll say that right now, through the ULUC, through this process, is not the appropriate way to make a decision about mandating stuff, right? As much as I would like to say mandate it, right? I think the community is entitled to a conversation about that and I think the more appropriate way to do it is through a sustainability master plan, uh, where we have, where we have, you know, consultants working with us, we have a very robust community engagement process and we do it right and we do it with as much community consensus as possible and we do it thoughtfully and we do it thoroughly. This is not the time or the place to do it all.
So you're saying leave it as an incentive?
Yeah.
Well said.
Agreed, agreed.
Yep.
Last question. Neighborhood convenience uses. The way they're shown right now is we've listed several uses. On their face, you might think that shouldn't be in a neighborhood, but they have, um, standards that require limited scale, limited lighting, limited outdoor activities, restrictive parking requirements. They must be adjacent to either a neighborhood connector or suburban connector, so they would not be in the middle of the neighborhood on two little streets. And we list the uses that are shown there in the box on the right-hand side, again, all with, um, requirements of, you know, residential appearance with pitched roofs and all those types of things. Kind of a conversion of a house into a small coffee shop or something of that nature.
What's the current, oh, sorry, what's the current code on that?
Well, we don't, we're not, we don't allow for commercial uses in neighborhoods today. So this is the neighborhood convenience, if you remember, we talked about it. So has a lot of sustainability value to, to that.
It's only going to work in certain neighborhoods and that's...
Couldn't we make it conditional?
So that it depends on the neighborhood?
That's the question, question permitted or conditional.
Well, in many cases, we have made them, um, conditional with standards. So in the use matrix, there is a superscript that says, this is subject to standards and it requires a conditional use. Well, some of them are permitted, such as, you know, um, a daycare or preschool, says that's permitted, but is subject to standards. Whereas something like a childcare center, be more of a commercial center, would have to require conditional use.
As long as we allow for a gun store, I'm good with it.
Restaurants.
More gun stores, the better.
Retail-oriented uses, conditional use. Most of them are conditional use, subject to standards, so they're going to have a higher level review. But are there any other uses other than those of us in this green box, including those at the bottom that aren't in there right now, that you think would be appropriate in a neighborhood, albeit at a much reduced scale?
I know what would not be appropriate is doggy daycare.
Not on the list?
Not on the list.
Okay, because I'm still, I'm still remembering that to keep, have the thing, buffer.
What are the others, are those?
Why are they separated?
Yeah, why are they separate? Good question.
We don't have grocery store, medical facility, or nursery or garden center. Those were some of the ones that public, members of the public brought up. And so we thought we'd put them out there and say, council, are these appropriate if they are, you know, it's like a, a walk-up neighborhood convenience grocery.
They have doggy daycare for a brief. Need to be on that.
Can you with the doggy daycare next door to you?
I don't think we can get an intelligent decision until we see the zoning map. Because that's going to show the areas where it can be, where you can have these things.
Yeah, I guess if we put the, if we lay the transition to the public. So then you can look at the...
Like, there's a laddy street, is that a connector that will allow something? Now it is.
Yeah, we'll add that over. I like those, well, I'm sure what the medical facility really entails, but the other two seem like they'd be potentially very appropriate for certain...
You like the gymnas office?
Gymnas office.
Because there's one in downtown Wilmer's Street.
Well, Wilmer Gardens is a great example. I mean, they're, but it, it, that's on a thoroughfare. But they're a good neighbor, yeah.
Which is what we're saying, it would be limited to those connector, connectors.
And that's, I guess, what Mark's asking for is where exactly are these going to be?
We've got to, we've got to look at the map, see, and then we can argue yes, no.
I'm with him, I think we need to look at the map.
We can easily do that. We could bring back just this one item. For ritual discussion.
I, I have a burning question. It's really been bothering me. On this zoning map, it doesn't, it looks like we lost some of our residence, residential areas on the zoning map, or is that, is that, am I not understanding it?
Ignore that zoning map. You haven't lost any residential areas, you've gained residential areas?
Okay, because I'm looking, where's the LLR and where's the MLR? And I'm only see, I'm only seeing these two.
Our first pass, we lived the current zoning and then we added new zoning on top of it for staff, but we're doing a color-based map and we'd be coming back on Thursday with them.
And you have consolidated the neighborhoods.
Well, I, I mean, from our current zoning map to what we're proposing, yes, we have consolidated residential zone districts.
Okay, let me ask you this. Okay. We used to have acreage, large, multifamily, medium, and small. And now I see acreage and medium family residential. I only see two in here.
Are you looking at the, this...
Zoning map.
Those are the ones that consolidated. The ones that are listed on that slide are only the ones that consolidated more than one district.
Yes.
Okay, so we still have small lot residential.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I was...
Sorry. Okay, I thought we lost our, our, our district. Thank you, sorry.
We'll get a map published on Thursday. That will show all those, like I said, it's, there'll be fewer lines.
Thank you, thank you, sorry, it was burning.
I just want to put it out in the public record, I don't think you took my vote for the, um, design standards. I find them to be a little too restrictive and it concerns me that, um, we are turning away potentially, um, some very cool designs to come into the city of Littleton. They may be more modernized, but that's just the way a city develops. So I'm the lone not supporter of, of that, I think it's a little too restrictive. Yep. I want to put it out there.
Yeah, those are our questions.
Did we get them all answered?
I believe we got them all answered.
Except for the plus.
Yes, except for that one, and that's, that's what we needed to be able to wrap up.
You're going to do a new map.
Red line version of the Unified Land Use Code, right? So this will be one that we'll come and do a run-through with you on Tuesday. We'll also have the zoning map to accompany us for that. And then we'll be creating the final ULUC that goes down.
Is that Thursday? September.
September 10th, and then we'll begin the consideration for adoption, starting with